... And they are all...
She's very good. I don't know if that's what they...
Yeah, I am very... I have... I have... I... I...
This is a...
Oh, man.
We can get on. You're... I'm looking at you. I was just... No. I don't even know what to tell. I... I don't know.
It's not... I'm... 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 Is it your... I'm screening. Yes. I'm... 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 I like... You need to... I... I... I'm... 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 I... I feel... I'm... I... I... You're... So... So... Ah. I guess... Now... Yeah. You... 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 I... I... We're making... That's... I expect so. You have to... So... I'm... You know, your... It was... Well... You want... I'm... I don't have... I don't... We get... On... Is this... I'm... So... One of this? I have... I'm... That is... So... We're gonna walk... For... It's a... It... You... You... That's... It... You... I got... I... Look... It's... I... Yeah. She... What's... Yeah. I'm... They... Okay. We... Oh, I think... I... I think... I... I... Do we... We have... Yeah. It's... If I had... The building... Those come along. I... I could... If he should... To... So... I'm... Yeah. You're gonna... So is your car. So is... But it's... You know... But she... You got three people. They might... Maybe... Like... Then it goes with... Three people to... Um... So... I'm... 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 He's... I'm... 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 Yeah. I'm... Yeah. Do you want to talk to... Just give... I'm... It's... I'm... You... How about second?
Do you have a charger that I can just steal for a little bit? Not take it, just... Can I just drop my... Here up here? To charge for a little? You can take it.
Here, this went there?
Yeah, yeah, can I just... I mean, I'll plug it right here.
Yeah.
I won't take it anywhere.
Sorry.
I'm not happy at anything.
Um... So...
Okay. All right. Anything I can run and get for you or anything?
Go get some water.
Okay. All right.
Uh, we're streaming, but everyone's muted, so that's happening. Can you guys...
Oh, shit.
Once they come in, then we'll...
Okay. So, still down?
Sup? Mm-hmm. Good, thanks. I think...
Oh. Good, then I'm gonna get the rest.
I'm... I'm... There... I'm... Mm-hmm. I'm... I... I know. Oh. Just... I... I'm... I'm... I didn't want to talk to you. I didn't want to talk to you. Okay. I'm sorry. It's... I... I... It's... I... 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 I'm... But... I'm... I'm... It's... You want to... Very... Yeah. I... You... It's... Okay. I... I... You know... I... I'm... I... I'm... I'm not... I'm... I'm... Active. I... Which is... I... But there's... I... It's so... Six... That's... Getting more... Children. You... The... Yeah. I'm... I thought I figured out like... I... So... Hey. All right. Yeah. Mm-hmm. You know... I... I think... So... Yeah. Not... Yeah. I'm... Are you... I have a... Let me... Run it a little bit. I... Yeah. I... I... Yeah. You... Not... I... I mean... But if you are... I... Yeah. I... No. I... How are you tonight?
Good.
Thank you for getting a talk done. I'm not... I... You... I think it's... But you need to... Yeah. I... I... I'm... Well... Get out of the... You... I... The... Free... How about... I... I... Yes. Hello. I'm... You... Yeah. I... It's... Okay. It is definitely some...
Sure.
One?
All right.
Thank you.
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 Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She knows I'm technologically challenged.
Yes, yes, I'm telling.
This is me. No, that's Tricia.
We got different names tonight.
Do I have time to run out to the car and grab something? Really? They're still in the bathroom.
I agree. Just heard it. Oh my.
I was already going in there. So you guys go out that way anyway. That's Lindsey C.
Yeah, check the.
You're where you always are, right now. Right there.
We should be.
Thank you. Red.
Not too long.
He just got back from Dominion Energy. She just set up stuff. So she just set her stuff down. What is all of this? What is this? Adjust the stuff. I believe. Use this.
I know about it. I need to stay kind. Speaker is the toughest speaker.
Good. All right, do I have a motion to return from closed session?
No moves.
Second.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. I think we're good from there, right? All right, so.
You need to motion to certify, right?
Okay, and then I need a motion to certify closed session.
Motion to certify closed session, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Ms. Huterson, will you pull the board, please?
I read James' courage. Whereas the King William County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this page pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such executive meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore, it would be resolved that the King William County School Board hereby certifies, certified to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which the certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered. Mr. Farmer?
I certify.
Mr. Wasserman?
I certify.
Ms. Atkins?
I certify.
Ms. Frazier?
I certify.
Ms. Catholics?
I certify. All right, now for anybody who is able, please stand with us to say the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of the United States. To the holy nation under God, indivisible, et noster. Liberty and justice for all.
All right, so next we have additions, changes, and approval of the agenda.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, and ladies and gentlemen that are in the audience this evening, our staff members that are here, and folks that might be listening from home, welcome and welcome to the first day of spring. I think this is a day that we've looked forward to since the first day of school. So we are on the downhill. Madam Chair, I don't have any changes to the agenda this evening.
Okay. All right, so then we can move on to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve final agenda, thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the final agenda?
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. All right, now the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion to approve.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. All right. I think you second. You seconded.
Second.
All right. Do we need to go to the presentations? Okay. All right, so next we have presentations. And we have a choir presentation tonight.
And Madam Chair, what I'll do is, as our choir colleagues and Ms. Reynolds are getting prepared, March is Music in Your Schools Month, and the choir would like to share with you some of the hard work that they've been doing to prepare for upcoming performances and just to be able to showcase what some of our fine students are able to do. And so Ms. Reynolds had requested an opportunity for her students to come in and perform. So we're happy that they're here, and maybe Ms. Reynolds might even share a word or two after her performance, but I think they're going to do a couple of numbers. So welcome, we're glad you're here, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so Renaissance piece called "Sankos Vici" in Latin, written by, I forgot whom, is written by Antonio Lotti. We're going to continue with a piece called "Homeward Bound", featuring Sarah Coffey first as soloist, and then Riley Redd as soloist. And excuse me, they're both finishing that first solo, I forgot.
Maybe introduce? Wow.
Thank you for that. Let me again say Sarah Coffey. Wave, Sarah. And this is Wyatt Turner, Riley Redd, and Lainy, Lain Penny. We're very happy, we're missing one young lady who could not be here tonight, but we're missing Morgan. But we're very happy to be here, thank you for letting us sing. Those, the Cum Sancta we sang on the December concert, the Homeward Bound, we're about to go to Assessment tomorrow, which is a big deal. Assessment is really the equivalent of our SOL. So it's, we go, we drive in, it's held at St. Christopher's this year. We sing for a large audience of choir members and choir directors, which is a little intimidating all by itself. And then we get judged by three judges and rated from one to five. One is the best and five is the worst. So this is only the second time in a long time that King William has gone. Last year was the first year that we went. And so we're excited to go, a little bit nervous again to go to Assessment this year. So thank you for letting us share our music with you this evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so next we have the preschool reverse inclusion proposal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Make sure our microphones are working here. Our instructional team has worked with the staff at the primary school to begin to rethink some opportunities for our preschool program. And our team is here, led by Mrs. Davis and Mrs. Wilken and Mrs. Waldron. They'd like to share with you tonight a proposal for a restructured or reconsolidated preschool program for next year. We've got some slides for you to see and for folks here to see. And share that proposal with you, be able to field any questions, and talk about some implications that, you know, that might come up or that, you know, that might be related to questions that you have. And then ultimately, what we'd like to do is seek board approval to move forward with that process, because we think it's gonna, it's gonna have some real benefits for our students. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Davis, and she can take it from here, so thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Wow, what a tough performance to follow after that. I don't know that we are going to sound as beautifully done and elegant as them, but we are excited to share some updates with you. So just like Dr. Wagner said, our team has done some time to reflect and evaluate our current programming for early childhood special education, or you will see ECSE in our slides tonight. And so our team really wanted to think, listen to the feedback that has been provided, and look at our current resources and our division strategic plan to think about, what can we do to improve student outcomes, student growth, provide support for teachers, and also expand our services to be inclusive and include more students in this programming. And so I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Wilken, who's going to share a little bit about our current model and what we would like to transition into with board approval.
Mr. McFly, could we slide, go a couple of slides down? Right here, yeah, current model, thank you. So currently, our two-year-olds and our three-year-olds do participate in the building. They come, our two-year-olds come for two full days, and our three-year-olds come for three full days. And that's not for every child, it is individualized, but that's the typical service delivery model right now. And that's participating in their special education services without peer models, without disabilities. Similarly, our four- and five-year-olds come for five days a week, and they also participate with other students with disabilities. They don't have access to peers without disabilities currently. And our proposed model is going to switch that a little bit. Our two-year-olds would come for ninety minutes. And what we would like that to look like is a playgroup, and also use that as an opportunity to support parents. So not just addressing IEP goals, but also working with parents and teaching them skills for functional communication and how we work with our youngest students with IEPs and special education support needs. And then our three-year-olds would still continue to come three days a week. However, we would have the opportunity to push in for the reverse inclusion class, which I'm going to talk to you about in just a moment, what that would look like. So they would have access to typically developing peers. So learning alongside typically developing peers while still working on their IEP goals. And then our next for our reverse inclusion, that's presently what, where our four- and five-years, four- and five-year-old students are, is in that ECSE classroom. But in the reverse inclusion setting, it would be a makeup of students both with disabilities and students without disabilities. So we would have up to eight students with disabilities and up to eight typically developing peers who could act as role models. And so they're participating in a preschool class together while working on IEP goals and also school readiness skills. And then we would continue to have our VPI class, where we do have some students who are included in the VPI class. And we would still have that opportunity with students that might not have as significant of special education support needs, could still be supported and attend in the VPI class. And so next is, what are the implications on staffing? So currently, we have one, or for, sorry, for reverse inclusion, we would have one ECSE teacher, which we presently have. And we have two, we would have two full-time paraprofessionals. So because we're looking at eighteen students, we want to make sure that we have enough staff to support both the students with disabilities and then also your typical four- and five-year-olds that would be in a preschool class. And then for our twos and threes, we would have one early childhood special education teacher and then a paraprofessional to support that. Also, when that's, you know, in the, whether that's in the playgroup or whether that's in the three-year-old group and when they're pushing into the reverse inclusion class. So we just have that additional adult support need. One thing to be noted, still on the slide, thank you, sir, is this is currently the staffing that we have allocated. We have one unfilled position currently this year. And so this would be projecting, still using the staff that we have currently projected for this year. However, one of those positions, one of the paraprofessional positions that we have listed up here, we have not been able to fill this school year. And so depending on what that looks like, there may or may not be a budget implication since we haven't been able to fill that for this year.
So we'll pause there for just a moment before we talk about benefits and just see if the board has any questions up until this point, because we covered a lot of information in just a few slides. So I want to give an opportunity to see if you all have any questions before we continue to move forward.
So the two-year-olds will only come to school for ninety minutes on two days a week?
So that is what we've, what we've looked into, yes. It's more aligned with what their natural environment would be. So it would be a playgroup that they're coming in and learning the skills and focusing on their specific skills for IEP services, but then also supporting parents in how to naturally embed that into the environment. So those, those functional communication skills, fine motor skills, things that, that other two-year-olds are working on, those students would work on in a playgroup setting, and also help educate the parents for how to support that in the home environment. Educate the parents.
So what are those two-year-olds currently doing when they attend two days a week?
So they're participating in, very similar, it's more of a, they work on their IEP goals. So they work on their current IEP goals. And then there's currently lots of opportunity for play that's incorporated in that. But this would concentrate the time more, again, on that IEP goal development, and then giving the parents the skills to help support that in their natural environment, whether that's at home or in a daycare setting, those types of different settings. Two full days is quite challenging for two-year-olds. A good portion is nap time right now, and all of our two-year-olds that we have are not all on the same nap schedule. Sorry, I keep knocking that. So really, this would, this would focus and concentrate the time on truly addressing those IEP goals and the readiness skills to prepare them for attending for full days.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but they do not attend full day, two full days. Currently, they're on half-days.
They're, I think we have one or two students that are coming whole day, and they're napping for a good portion of that day, and then other students. And they're napping for a good portion of that day, and then other students are coming for two half-days. More questions?
So we're talking several hours minimized down to ninety minutes, correct?
In one, so I think right now our half-day students are coming for approximately three hours. And so it would be, yes, ninety minutes, but twice a week.
Still needing their IEP times within those ninety minutes. So if their service times that they have outlined in that IEP would still be met in that IEP.
Would one teacher try to do ninety minutes for how many two-year-olds?
So currently, we have one two-year-old.
Please hold questions, please, until you speak publicly. It's okay, go ahead.
So currently, we do have one, one two-year-old that is projected to be receiving ninety minutes. So that's ninety minutes of concentrated specialized instruction to address IEP goals twice a week.
And remember, in that setting, there is one full-time teacher and one full-time aide helping assist with those IEP goals within those ninety minutes, twice a week, and inviting the parents to participate as well if their schedules allow.
Have you done a parent survey to see how this would work for them as far as like if they drop them off and pick them up, or if they stay?
So we have not done a parent survey. However, we, transportation would be provided. That's, that's actually a regulation, is that transportation is provided if students require it to access their special education. So that is absolutely something that, that we could discuss and provide. The thought is wanting to have that, that home connection with the parent. There's a number of divisions that, that have utilized this model where, for the two-year-olds. And it's truly for that two-year-old group, because so much of. Old group, because so much of what we're teaching in the classroom, whether it's for nine minutes or half a day, is something that, again, those functional skills that we really need the parent to carry out, carry through with. So right now, our one student that we do have identified that's going to be coming to us is in Part C, which is early intervention. So early intervention serves students birth to, can go up to three, but two, because school age can serve two to twenty-two. And so it very, it is also very similar to the current model if they're using an early intervention. So it's really not only providing that direct service to the student, but it's also teaching those skills to the parent in their natural, in, so they can bring it back to their natural environment and continue to work on those skills. And it's not just something that's worked on in the schools.
Thank you. And so you're asking for one additional para?
We currently have that position right now, and it's something that's posted right now. We just haven't been able to fill it. So if that position is not also part of the budget for next year, then that, that could be something that we're asking to, that would be the only budget implication that we've identified as potentially needing for next year.
And there's a potential offset to that cost too that's related to a tuition proposal for typical peers, an additional number of typical peers that could access the preschool program. So I think you're going to get to that.
Any other questions?
No.
So we just wanted to take a brief comment and talk about the benefits of the proposed model. And so in doing some research and having, you know, worked with some other school divisions and reaching out and getting some information, we found that in this process that it gives just access to typically developing peers who can serve as role models for our students who are working on communication goals, working on social skills to help foster friendships amongst their peers. We also have found in research that it has increased their self-respect for themselves and skill acquisition as they're working towards their IEP goals. Obviously, we're working through those communication skills, so they have been able to show improvement on those specific communication IEP goals. They have an enhanced sense of belonging. So we are creating that classroom environment for students that we would hope to see continue on into that kindergarten year. So we're exposing them to a general education setting and helping prepare them for that kindergarten classroom. So you will see that increase kindergarten readiness. And then just increased awareness and responsiveness for students with disabilities amongst our students. And so we have found that this is a great way and a great program that we could consider as a school division moving forward to provide these opportunities for our students. We would also be looking at the eight typically developing peers, as students that are four years old and looking to enroll in one of our VPI programs or head start. So that's kind of where we would work to generate that list. And Ethan, if you can go to the next slide. So this is where Dr. Wagner referred to the tuition. So we would ask for our typically developing peers to pay a thousand dollars per semester and cost of attendance, because it is, it's not funded by the state. It would be a program that we are offering as a division. And so for those eight slots, we would ask for a thousand dollars per semester, which is still, if you were to enroll in a daycare facility, it's still a little bit cheaper than what you would find in the, within the community. And this would just really help to provide students with math maps, age of. And this would just really help to provide students with math mats, age-appropriate toys to practice their communication. Play amongst each other. It would help supply, make, create supplies for crafts, materials that they would need to complete activities. And hopefully, help us with looking at curriculum that we could adopt for our preschool programming in general. So that would, those funds would go towards that curriculum that we could provide and help support teachers in the transition. And then the next slide kind of talks about if we, if we did get approval, what would be our next step? So next step would be certainly to meet their preschool team, to talk through what our plans would be, staffing and work with them to prepare for next year. In April, we would begin to outreach with, to families on the VPI waitlist to enroll in the program and offer the opportunity. We would also begin to look at the IEP goals for rising fours and fives. That would be anticipated to participate in our ECSE program for next year. Because we want to make sure that we are creating a classroom that is going to be, that's going to be inclusive. And everyone is able to find success within that classroom. We would, in May, begin to assess materials and determine what additional needs you would have, need for the program to get started in August. And then throughout the summer months, we would continue to monitor enrollment for both ECSE and peer models. And begin on that communication to families as we begin to pair, prepare for the new school year. And then August, we would send those welcome letters and work towards collecting tuition for participation. So that is the end of our slideshow, and I'll pause again to see what additional questions the board may have before we wrap up.
So I knew last year, I, as a parent, I was notified of my children's admittance. Into the VPI program until May. So if parents aren't being notified until May, how are we, how are we?
Knowing there's a waitlist in April.
So that's a great question, and actually with input from you, we talked as a team about how we can try to, not expedite. But shorten that length of time from when we do our.
But shorten that length of time from when we do our screenings, so we completed our screenings last week, and how we can shorten that time with, excuse me, with no.
We've had, I think we had upwards around sixty students or children that came to the screening. And so we'll already have a good number of students that don't make it into the program. But we are trying to speed up that process a little bit, because I know, as you shared, you know, that's really hard. Because you have to commit to a community preschool or a private daycare, you know, earlier than that. And sometimes you have to absorb the cost of that registration. So we're speeding that process up in hopes to have this process go along a little bit more quickly as well.
Which leads to the next question. If, say I am on the waitlist and I want my child to participate, they're typically developing children. And I say, oh, sure, that's great, but then I find something that I like maybe better. How, how does that help the parent with a child who's looking forward to this inclusion program? Because I can back out at any point, if I'm not paying a deposit for this tuition or anything else, then. That lets that parent down.
Right.
The other child down as well. So how are we ensuring that doesn't happen?
Is to build a roster with students that are then on the waitlist for reverse inclusion. So if something were to happen, life circumstances change, a child moves, we'll have additional families that we can tap into. Because as Ms. Davis mentioned, a thousand dollars sounds like a lot, but a lot of families are paying upwards of a thousand dollars a month. For private and community preschool now. So, you know, even if they're at a facility, they may, if they're on that waitlist for us, and we were to reach out in October, November, they may say, oh, I'd like. To participate in that opportunity. So we, we're anticipating that we're going to be able to build not just the eight slots, but we'd like to identify a few more families and let them know. You're here on the waiting list if something were to open up.
So is a deposit required?
We haven't talked about that.
Okay.
We haven't, we haven't really gone down to the nitty-gritty about that, we just went with an amount at this point.
And then is the amount for the tuition, is that due all at once, are parents paying monthly?
And that's something that we've discussed, that how would we like that, you know, is it once at the beginning, can we work out a payment plan? And to be honest, that's something that I think we would need to coordinate with Ms. Longest to see how that could, could best work with, for our families. But also to support and provide us with the materials we need for the program.
And so then how many out of the sixty that y'all screened are you thinking about enrolling into the program?
So we didn't go into the VPI screenings with this as, oh, those are our peers. What we're going to do is we're going to identify the students who are going to have access to VPI. And then the students that don't, because there, there's a lot of requirements.
Don't, because there's, there's a lot of requirements to get into VPI. So students that maybe their family's money or don't necessarily have all of the.
The criteria, meet all of the criteria for VPI, then we're going to look at those families and then look at a good fit for the students that we invite. And so our goal is to bring eight students in, and then like, like I mentioned, have some additional families that we would have as, as a backup or on the waitlist.
So, but eight typical and eight special needs, correct? So a, a class of sixteen.
Correct.
Okay, so then only the children that do not qualify for the VPI will be able to get into the reverse inclusion.
I think that's where we're going to look first.
Okay, so it'll only be one class in the reverse inclusion comprising of sixteen children?
Yes.
Okay, so then my second thing is what qualifies somebody as a typical peer?
So there's not any like hard facet for VPI, there are specific guidelines that we have to meet. In order to identify a student as eligible to participate. For reverse inclusion, there's not anything that's set by the state or federal. So it would really be for us, we would want them to be, not have any developmental delays. Because we're going to be serving students with disabilities, so we want the eight typically developing peers to be developing. Age appropriately.
Appropriately, so they can be those, those peer models. So that would, we have, again, have teased out exactly what the requirements are.
We've talked with other divisions and they have things like, they're toilet-trained, they're able to, you know, do, do certain things independently. Directions.
Yeah.
And for the typically developing peers.
Okay, so then for those typically developing peers, does parents' income or anything like that play into it? Or it's just like first come, first served, if your kid's on, meeting all the milestones?
So we would look, again, we would look at this, the families that don't necessarily meet the criteria for VBI. Because we are also looking at, at this, as the quality preschool program that we're going to be able to open up to families in our community. That might not be able to afford, so we're not going to look at their income, but we are going to first look at that pool of families that have applied. Or gotten screened for VPI, so that's going to be our first pool that we're going to look at. But we're not, we, we haven't discussed that we would have a threshold for family income.
Okay.
But just starting with that pool is going to bring us, the population of, of families that have more, more needs.
So my last question is, so only the eight typical peers will be paying tuition, but not the eight special needs children?
Correct.
And so the tuition that is paid by the typical peers, is that also funding the supplies and mats and stuff for the special needs children?
Yes, for the program.
Okay, so why are parents that have children of special needs not paying that cost? When if they were to send them to a daycare or something else like that, that they would also pay?
So we're, we provide special education services, it's free and appropriate public education. And so for our students with disabilities, we're providing that, and we can't charge for those services. And so we do not have to educate, we're not required to educate students until they're at the kindergarten age. So for those other students, we are offering a service to those families by bringing them to the preschool. So that's where that tuition is for those peers and not for the students with disability.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's my turn.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so my little Sally probably can qualify for the program. But do I have to have a regular daycare for her also because she's only going to school part-time?
She's going full-time, it's a four-five day.
Five days, five full days, five full days.
Okay, so the four and five-year-old program, okay, so the two and three-year-olds that are going to be.
That's a different thing.
That's a different, okay, all right.
That's a good question.
I, 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 I just, yeah.
No, that was, that was good, that was good, thank you, that allowed us to clarify.
Are there any other questions?
Nope.
I personally would like to get more information before I vote. I'm not sure how my peers feel, but.
What, you, you said you'd look at other school divisions that were offering this, what, what are some of those school divisions?
Hannover, Chesterfield, Gloucester.
Gloucester.
And our, our teachers went to observe the program last Friday to see what it looked like at another division. As well as part of their professional.
And members of the board, I can, I can share, in a prior division, we restructured preschool. In, in a similar format to form a consolidated preschool, because what, what, what it's really doing is providing a continuum of ser, of services. For, for children from age two all the way to age five that qualify for preschool. Like Mrs. Wilkins said, for the students with disabilities or who have an IEP, we are required to provide those services as early. As, as two years old, but a full day, or even in, in many cases, a half-day. Is not the most appropriate placement for a two-year-old child, and like Ms. Wilkins said, in some cases. Children may come to school and they may sleep a portion of that time anyway, and miss an opportunity for, for some direct services. Depending on what those service needs are. And so being able to target that time to be service-only is, is an appropriate thing to do for children at that age. And then I think the distinction was already made, the twos and threes would have, would not be a full day. But the fours and fives would be a full day. And this would be our first opportunity, at least in, in my understanding, since VPI has returned. To offer a preschool opportunity for children other than those who qualify for special education or for VPI. So some school divisions, if you have the resources, might choose to offer universal preschool to every four-year-old in the community. We could choose to do that, we don't have the space to do that. But we, but if you followed some of the recent proposals out of the state legislature. From not just the current governor, but from even the, the prior governor, there is a preschool initiative. And there's some additional funding that's come down the pike to support VPI. And in some divisions, VPI has grown, King William is one of them, I think we started with one class, I believe, and now we have enough for two classes. It's, it's all dependent on funding and LCI and, 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 and that sort of thing. But the students that are in the special education preschool now, that's, that's essentially self-contained. And we have an obligation to work toward the least restrictive environment, and that's where that blend, that consolidation comes in. Is to provide some of those children who are ready developmentally to work with typically developing peers. That really is a way to expand the continuum of services. So that it's not just self-contained all the way through, but they have, they have access to more. What we would say is general education.
I think one of my biggest concerns is the funding portion of it. I know that we didn't budget for that additional para, which is twenty-six thousand dollars. So if we are charging parents, eight parents a thousand dollars a semester, that's only what, sixteen thousand dollars? And that's supposed to help fund the position as well as supplies, mats. Curriculum.
I, I think for the tuition, and to for staffing, I think we would have to look at that being. For full transparency, we were planning for the tuition to really focus on the curriculum needs of the program. And additional materials needed such as math mats, if they needed to be provided, things like that. So that, that, you're exactly right, we would need to look at the budget and see where that would come from.
So that leads me to my next thing, if we don't have the funding to fund that position, will that make or break the program?
It could potentially, depending on the enrollment of students. So if we have a full class of projected for ECSE next year, which I believe we have eight students.
We have seven.
We have seven stu, students, so we would have room for one additional student. And we would have to really think about how many typically developing peers we could allow within the program. With a reason to also meet state regulations as well.
I think, I think my concern is making sure that we. Can collect the tuition and get the students in the program. And getting into the nitty-gritty in that as far as the typically developing. Because I knew that a lot of parents with children that have special needs, they look forward to a program like this. Where their children can be normal, for, for lack of a better term. And I don't want to make a promise and then all of a sudden not. But then the flip side of that is King's Grant is shutting down. So another preschool program in King William is definitely a huge need here. So I think looking at how we're going to identify those children and ensure that they are here. So that we're looking at both sides of the coin and making sure we aren't promising something that we can't deliver. For whatever reason.
Yeah, and that, that's a great, that's a great point. This, this is a model that I've supported in a previous division. And we never had a hard time filling the peer, peer role, so we always did have those peers. And so I anticipate that, that that will be an opportunity, because parents want good quality preschool. And it's not, there's not a lot of options out here. And so, you know, that is, is something that I think will, I think parents will appreciate and desire. And so, you know, I think looking at that tuition, and, and in the past, we've done contracts where you sign the tuition. And it's not fun to be the person that calls and reminds people to, to pay their tuition, but, but we've done it before. And, and, you know, having that contract to say, you know, your child gets to participate in this program. And because they are participating, this is, this is the responsibility of the parents. So, you know, it's, it's again, not the fun phone call, but an important one to make sure that we're able to, to fund and support the program.
So these other localities, I'm sorry.
No, I'd just like to see that ironed out a little bit more before I.
Yeah, absolutely.
These other localities are charging the tuition as well?
Yes, I think our neighboring division was charging more than the a thousand dollars, I think it was two thousand dollars if I'm not mistaken.
When you say neighboring, who was that?
I believe that was Gloucester when we discussed it.
So is Caroline County, Essex, Middlesex, any of those have a program like this? Because those are technically the ones we compare with.
I believe, and I'm speaking from like a few years ago, I believe that Essex does, but we can definitely follow up on that. This was a huge push about five years ago from the state to push for more inclusive opportunities. For students, early childhood students with disabilities. And so a number of school divisions actually utilized like grants called IPOP. If you guys, I don't know if you might have heard of that. And so that was something that was pushed out about five years ago. And so a lot of divisions have tweaked that from the original kind of format into their own format of reverse inclusion. Or grading funding, which might be VPI and, and other students with, with disabilities. But we can absolutely get additional information and we can provide some examples of what some of those contracts look like. If that, you know, that would obviously be helpful for you guys.
And so based on our feedback from you all tonight, it sounds like our next steps for additional information, and let me know if I've missed anything. Is we want, want to make sure we clarify the budget implication, see if there's a way that we could find funds for that. And then we want to discuss the collection of tuition, so what does that look like, the contract that Ms. Will can refer to? And then more information on the, the specific identification process of the typically developing peers.
And then it sounded like amount or the funds that other divisions are, are.
Yes.
Closer, closer to how we're operating here specifically.
And I have, I have one more, and that would be the two and a three-year-old program? I and I got, I have one more. And that would be um the two and a three-year-old program. You mentioned that we have to provide transportation if it need be. How would we do that? Okay. Because I know sometimes we're struggling with getting some of our other children to some of the other schools or whatever that they have to go to. We don't necessarily have, I know Ms. Long has been waiting for months and years, it seems like, for some vans and some whatever to come through. So how how would that work? What would that look like? And who pays for that?
Yeah, yeah, we do as a division currently for students, for all of our students, for our preschool students, just right now, they're not accessing typically developing peers. They're they're like Dr. Wagner said, they're receiving their services.
I'm talking in particular, I'm talking in particular about the two-year-olds that, you know, if 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 mama doesn't have a car to bring them and they're only coming Tuesdays and Thursdays for ninety minutes, if we have to provide that transportation, what's the cost and how is that? Who's paying for that and those things?
Sure. And I think we are providing that now essentially to those students. So I think
For the two and three that do have day? For the two and three-year-olds that do have day?
Yeah, yeah.
So how many in addition?
It's only a
Okay, and projections for next year. Again, remember we have one, one two-year-old. I know there's room to grow and we would need to be able to support it if we had more students participate. Um, where is it the most effective is offsetting the time. So it's not necessarily the the travel time of, you know, eight o'clock. It's not eight o'clock and then, you know, to nine thirty. It might be in between ones. So we're able to utilize the current transportation vehicles and staff to support that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. These are all really good questions. Thank you. We're gonna get some more information for you guys.
So uh Madam Chair, if I may, do you want the group to come back at the April meeting with a summary of this information?
That would be fun.
Okay, would be great. Thank you.
All right, next we have citizen comments. Um, looks like we only have two signed up. Um, so Kelly Sport. Bot, sorry. And before you start speaking, um, we do need to set the clock. And then if you can just give us your name, what district you're in, please.
Okay, so my name's and I'm in the fourth district.
Yep.
You let me know when I
Oh, you're good. You're good.
Start over. Sorry, I wasn't ready. Oh, okay.
All right, yeah.
All right. All right. So I have three children, two of which attend Cool Spring Primary School. The first item I want to talk about is inclusion. So that's pretty fitting. Um, but specifically uh with the pre-K, which was just talked about, my son is currently in the pre-K special education program at CSPS. And he really thrives when there's a model that he can watch, uh which also helps him interact um with different tasks. Personal benefit from an inclusive setting in school to help him reach his educational goals in his IEP. But this um also helps him develop socially and emotionally. Um, not only does it help um children with special needs, but it also helps typically developing peers interact with people with different abilities. Um, the second item I like to talk about is administration that travel between CSPS and AES. Um, I wouldn't be completely honest with you guys. I haven't really heard one person pleased with this arrangement. Um, communication appears to be lacking with administration, parents and staff. Ms. Wilkins was in a very fragile and difficult situation, starting um this kind of setup with sharing administration after school started and really not having a plan in place. So one person can only do so much. And um I would also like to add that the principal should all know everything that's happening in the building. And I can tell you, it's pretty impossible with what she's been given this year. Um, I also want to throw in there that there was a letter sent out after the beginning of the school year or after the start of the school year. And um I still had like about a meeting about how the administration was going to work, how the traveling was going to work in between the schools, and that has yet happened. Um, so we're at the end of the school year and we were promised a meeting of how this is going to work and it it it's not happening. Um. Lastly, I would like to Lastly, I would like to talk about you guys, the school members. Um, and my opinion is that you guys need to be in school a little bit more often. And I'm not talking about visits to the school like for an award or for a planned appearance. I'm talking about being immersed in the school setting. So being a substitute, for example, helping out in the library, helping out in the office, helping out in a special education classroom. Um, this needs to be, you know, more than just an hour or two. It needs to be a consistent like once a month or something. I know some of you have other jobs, but this is your job too. And you're responsible to help all students and staff in King William to be successful. This may open your eyes um to experience what the everyday looks like and the reasoning behind why they're asking for different budget needs. Um, I also want to throw in there um that with everything that was just talked about with inclusion, um, my son right now attends, um, he's three and he did it once or two and he really benefited.
I'm very sorry, but time is up. Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Peyton Jester.
Let me know when I can talk. Um, so
Can you state your name and your district first, please?
Peyton Jester and District Three.
Thank you.
Um, so my daughter was in twos program and it helped her thrive being a special needs child. So I feel like going ninety minutes a day, right now the teachers don't even have time for students that are in here. And yes, it's been identified that there was only two, one two-year-old. But what happens when there's five two-year-olds and you have, you know, are they all coming at one time for those ninety minutes? It's a playgroup, so I assume they're all coming at one time. How are you supposed to do work on your IEP with one teacher doing all those students? So I'm I'm just gonna throw that out there. But the the program was super beneficial for my kids and I know for Kelly's kid, Kelly's kid, it was super beneficial. And I think uh care as well. Our kids thrived and that's the time where our kids need to be in that kind of a situation. So I think that um the ninety minutes a day is, uh in my opinion, not a great idea, but I'm not, you know, I'm just here. So um, you know, that's all I gotta say, so.
Thank you.
Uh, there's stuff stuff I want to say, but I'm gonna table that.
All right, so next we have our superintendent items with Dr. Wagner.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Yep, we are on good. The first item under eight point one is a a monthly item that we bring to the board and Ethan, if you wouldn't mind bringing up the
Second page.
Second page. Yeah, thanks. And actually, uh if you wouldn't mind bringing up the first page too. And if you scroll to the bottom of that, right there, well, ju- just where that little chart is. Went a little bit too far. Okay, okay, there we are, right there. Um, this is, this is something that we brought to the board each month. And we began this in the late fall, just to share with the board and with the community the percentage of students for each month that is uh absent for a certain percentage of the school days. And and we share this because of the accreditation metric of chronic absenteeism that all schools in Virginia are accountable to. And the description again is if you have more than fifteen percent of your students absent for more than ten percent of the school days for any reason, whether it's vacation or hospitalization or and or or whatever. If if more than fifteen percent of the students is absent and that school is characterized as um the that their the students are chronically absent. Um, and that is a, that's a actually a national definition, but uh public schools in Virginia are held accountable to that um each year. And so I just shared with you in this chart, and we'll do this every month, that it shows that if the school division or I'm sorry, if the school year ended at the end of February, that three of our four schools would have had fifteen percent or more of the students absent for ten percent or more of the school days. And so this just underscores that attendance, school attendance today is a lot different than it was ten or fifteen years ago, certainly before COVID. Um, I think the national statistic is that one in four students nationwide misses more than ten percent of uh the of the of the school year. And so chronic absenteeism is is a real issue. And I know that our schools struggle to, you know, maintain communication with families and sometimes families struggle to get their kids to attend school. But we just shared this information again so that you know that we track attendance on a regular basis. And we're always looking for ways to try to promote attendance. And I know that several of our schools, uh certainly at the elementary level, have um some positive supports in place to promote attendance, but um the data are what they are. So let me pause and see if you have any questions about this. Okay, so if you if you look, at least on this chart, if you look just at the high school, uh, the high school is the highest of all of our three schools. It's it it's easy to argue that a high school student is able to get himself or herself up in the morning to school. Where if you look at Cool Spring, you know, those children are tiny and they probably rely on a parent to get them up and and to the bus. Um, lots of reasons why students may miss school. And um but the data are what they are. But at least at the high school level at um about twenty-five percent, that is the national average, is that one in four students is missing more than ten percent of the school days. So not not, I mean, it's it's high from my perspective. I'd love to have all of our schools at five percent or lower. But but these data are what they are and and, you know, we're, again, looking for ways to try to promote and improve student attendance. Okay, so no questions there. So we'll move to the second report, which is a discipline report. And this is a new format this month for you. And I know that uh we've had some conversation recently about the ways that we report discipline and the ways that uh schools are responding to discipline. And I know we're gonna have or responding to behavior. And I know we're gonna have some preliminary discussion this evening with the code of conduct. And we'll talk a little bit about a a strategy or a plan moving forward to um promote some consistency. But I wanted to share with you that we are going to begin reporting responses to student behavior in a much more consistent way. And so we have the discipline report that you'll see. We'll probably share this each month in the consent agenda, just so that you have it and you can and you can, you know, just acknowledge your receipt of it. I'm happy to discuss it, you know, if if uh if you'd like to do that. Um, but we've we've got this designed in a way where we can record the number of suspensions by school, whether they're in school or out of school, specific to the state behavioral code. And these state behavioral codes, in some cases, they're specific, but in other cases, they are broad. And so there are are lots of behaviors in between. Uh, but nonetheless, we wanted you to be able to see uh each month and a year-to-date running total of the number of suspensions across our schools. And obviously, this is one of the reasons why in our budget proposal, we are interested in school security officers and additional adult support in school to help uh to help us deal with students that um that struggle with behavior. We will be adding one additional statistic at the elementary level.
No, all schools.
I'm sorry, all schools? Okay, very good. We're gonna be adding one additional statistic for all schools beginning next month, and you'll see a column for each school added. So right now you see ISS. Yeah, Ethan, if you don't mind, if you hold it right there, you see OSS and ISS for each school. And for folks that are watching or listening, uh OSS stands for out-of-school suspension. ISS stands for in-school suspension. Both count as what's called a removal. They're both a suspension. Uh, but we're gonna add a third column under each school that's gonna be ATS. And that's gonna stand for alternative to suspension. And that's going to indicate the number of times that administrators are responding to student behavior or intervening in ways that avoids suspension. So it is a a state initiative and quite honestly, a national initiative to try to reduce the amount of time that students are removed from instruction, which is really the definition of suspension, is a a removal from instruction. And um, you know, there are certain infractions that may occur in a school where we are not permitted to remove uh a student from instruction. And so um, you know, we'll be able to talk about these data more as we move through the year. I'm excited to be able to begin uh next year with this format because I know that we've um, you know, as I've, as I've come aboard in my role, just trying to understand the data that we do have, how it's collected, how it's reported. It's my goal to be as transparent as possible and to try to provide as much information as we can to help improve our decision-making and our responses. And so we just shared this new format with you tonight. Uh, it'll be slightly modified for the coming months to include an alternative to suspension. And we think that that ATS number is really gonna give the board and the community some greater insight into the amount of administrative time that's invested in responding to student behavior that often doesn't result in suspension. And so, you know, vast majority of our kids um, you know, make good decisions each day, but sometimes kids do make decisions that require an administrative intervention, but not necessarily a suspension or a removal from school. So we'll add those data beginning next month. So let me pause there and see if any board members uh has any feedback on this new reporting tool.
Can somebody
I like it. It's good. The more information you have, the better. I appreciate it.
Can somebody, if they get in trouble, can they be disciplined due to multiple codes?
Yes, I think what you're gonna see here is the primary code.
Yeah, it's both.
Okay, we got both on there? Okay, so they appear in two places?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so yes, that's right. Mrs. Hutcheson is is the voice behind the scenes who is populating this chart and working with Ms. Butler to make sure that we can pull these data. So yes, it does report multiple codes.
And when multiple codes are reported, does that stack onto the discipline for each offense?
In um in some cases, um, there was only a couple for the month of February that had double. And like say, one, one specific child could have had one day of ISS, but three days of OSS for a particular code. So even though there may have been two codes in there, there was different punishments for each, but it's all listed under that chart. Does that make sense?
Okay, thank you.
Any more feedback? Okay.
I don't know.
Am I, shall I just move on through these items, Madam Chair?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, the next item is one that I brought to the board back in January when uh when you first began as a new board. And that was the student representative to the school board that we wanted to begin for the next school year. Um, I've shared with you a proposed policy that, or a regulation rather, that allows that. And that's in uh the board packet that that folks can see. And um I've been working with Mr. McConville, who has been working with uh a student group at his school to help generate a process by which a student representative or representatives could be selected. And then we would make a choice and then be able to bring that recommendation to the board. And we hope to be able to do that no later than May so that we could introduce uh a student member to you who then would be able to begin in the fall, probably in August is what what I'm thinking. Just to, I'm not sure if we'd be able to get a student here in July. Um, but they're certainly would be welcome to attend in June and July, but I I think we might, we might try to begin that representation in August. Um, I think it'll be a a great opportunity for there to be a student voice on the board. And for uh that student to be able to go back to the high school and share information with and for uh that student to be able to go back to the high school and share information with the student group and to try to be uh really inclusive. We'll just have to figure out a table, because we'll need a place for that for that student to be somewhere up here with an extra microphone and computer and all that good stuff. So I'll pause there and uh see if anybody, if any board member has a question or a comment. And then I think our our goal is to bring a student back to you, hopefully no later than the May meeting for an introduction.
Any questions?
Pretty clear in the package.
Like it, I think it's excellent.
All right, so I would like to um, or can I get a motion to approve to have a student representative for the school board?
Yeah, motion to approve?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Which one wants it?
Eric.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no.
Okay, who the lucky person will be, we'll find out pretty soon, but we're excited about that. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
The next item is the annual Perkins application, and we have this, it is an action item, but we have it uh in the in the board packet as well, just for information in case you had any questions about it. But uh each year, we're required to declare to the state how we intend to spend the few Perkins dollars that we do receive. Unfortunately, uh we have Ms. Langford from the high school who is here tonight. She has been generous with her time as she awaits in the back, and she's here to help answer any questions that you have. Uh but these Perkins funds are federal dollars that are earmarked for career and technical education. Uh there are um certain categories of expenses that qualify for Perkins dollars, but there are other categories that don't. Uh but nonetheless, Ms. Langford has worked hard to create a spending proposal that she has for you, and she seeks your approval this evening. Ms. Langford, did I cover it all? And so this is an action item, if you don't, if you don't mind.
Sure. Does she wanna share what she's known?
Ms. Langford, do you wanna, do you wanna come up and share a highlight or two? She says, sure, I do. Been waiting all night to do that. Thank you for being here. I really appreciate it.
Um so this is actually a Perkins plan we do every year. It's, we run it the very, very similar. Change it to meet the needs of the community and the school based off of our CLNA um comprehensive local needs assessment. Uh so this is, we've run it very, very similar, very things that are um, kind of we look at the program, we have, we try to seek out what are our our plans for the year? What equipment are we gonna need to um improve the programs? And then that's how we decide how we are gonna spend our money.
Thank you. Do you have any ideas for this coming year?
So we have lots of ideas. We're actually trying to put together five-year plans so that we can um kind of nail down what programs need the most attention and have it on a five-year cycle so that we're not running into issues where our entire photography lab needs to be replaced and have a huge expenditure in one year. So that's kind of our game plan for for the next five years, just to have that yearly yearly plan replaced and what's gonna be updated.
Thank you. Any questions? No? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. And the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Langford. Thank you, members of the board. The next item, eight point four, if I'm reading correctly, is facility use requests. We typically have this item as a consent item. Uh thanks for bringing that up, Ethan. Uh we typically have facility use requests as a consent item. Um but we wanted to bring this to the board's attention for some open discussion. And we might not resolve every issue here this evening. Uh but we wanted to share with you um some specific requests that we have received that um that might be atypical compared to a facility request from Parks and Rec, let's say, or from some of the after-school activities that that might occur. And so if you go back to to the first page, uh thanks, right there. We already have um an agreement with Parks and Recreation for facility use. It's part of our MOU with Parks and Rec, and that's that's fairly typical in a community with a public school. Uh we do also have requests for the schools to be used by outside agencies um and outside groups. And we have a facility use policy that allows us to approve uh certain uses of the building. Um, you know, depending on what those uses are and what they might entail. Uh but we, I I it's important for school divisions to to be very specific in their facility use policies with respect to um to groups that represent either one side or another. So for instance, we've had some recent requests for facility use from religious institutions. And um I think I think we've had two requests uh in the last month or so. One for worship services in a school and another for for funeral services in a school. And these requests haven't necessarily um, you know, made their way all the way through facilities used to the school board. But they've but they've at least made their way to staff. And so I wanted just to share with you that we've had some requests that are aren't are not necessarily typical like Parks and Rec. The it it's important for the board and the community to know that when the school board opens up its facilities for public use, that truly means public use in in i- if if the policy allows for that. So for instance, one of the one of the the requests that yous, we'll bring it back up, that you can see on the the first item was the Republican Party of Virginia. So the Republican Party has requested to use and has been approved to use King William High School for um for some of its membership voting for a date in May. Um and I wanna talk to you a little bit about where the school division has and hasn't been consistent with with things like this. Um, so if the Republican Party of Virginia has been approved to use the high school gym, which I believe is an appropriate use because the Republican Party is a bona fide um public entity. Um, we would also have to allow the Democratic Party, the Independent Party and any other party that wants to use a facility, we would have to allow them the opportunity to use the the facility, assuming that the scope of that use would fall within whatever our parameters were. So in other words, uh the Republican Party is going to use the high school gym for a specified period of time, for a specified number of people. And um and and that's essentially the the event. Where we've been inconsistent in the past, and 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 if you have any specific questions, I'm gonna invite Mr. Stone and Mrs. Longus to maybe bring a historical perspective. Where we've been inconsistent in the past is the extent to which we've assessed fees for folks that wanna use our schools. And our policy says that we have a fee schedule and outside groups that don't have an MOU with us, like Parks and Rec, because Parks and Rec, just like the school division, we are both county entities. So we have a mutual agreement to to share at no cost. Um, but the outside groups that come in, it would be typical for an outside group to pay a fee. We have not been consistent with um how fees have been assessed before. And as a matter of fact, for the Republican Party coming in, the understanding is is that they are gonna come in and use the facility for no fee. And that's and and because because we have not been consistent in charge, you, we can't just pick and choose who pays a fee and who doesn't without a specific MOU. And so um we have, we have not been consistent assessing fees in the past and um have been very hospitable to to reasonable requests for facility use. And um so some of what we've, we've, we've had to assume internally is the cost for a custodian or custodians to work the event, for utilities, restroom use, obviously water use, um any kind of supervision that might be there and that sort of thing. So I'm gonna pause here in just a minute and see if you have any, if you have any specific comments. And maybe Mr. Stone and Ms. Longus can can join us at the podium. But but to give you an example, um for the Republican Party, their use of the gym, I think is an appropriate use because they're a public entity and they're inviting citizens in to come in and and talk about their their membership and to and to vote on, to vote on certain things. Well, what would we do in it for in the school division if um if that particular event all of a sudden became controversial and we needed law enforcement? Who's responsible for providing law enforcement? Is that the school division or would that be the Republican Party? Um, if they are anticipating, um and I've I've spoken to some to somebody from the organization about this, they're anticipating several hundred people. Well, what if it turned into several thousand people? And then people are now parking on the lawn and we need traffic control out front. And all of a sudden, you know, they they've anticipated that they might be done by one o'clock, but now they need to extend to five o'clock and our custodian that we hired needs to leave. And so so there are reasons why um it's important to talk about consistency and to try to make sure that whoever is using the facility and makes a request that we are willing to improve operates within those, within those guidelines. So I'm gonna pause there and allow Mr. Stone and Ms. Longus maybe to elaborate a little bit on what the past past practice has been, the extent to which fees have been assessed or not assessed, and what some of their recommendations might be. So I'll pause and then we'll have a little bit of open discussion.
Okay, so um when I first got here, the facility use process was under me for approval. And so I brought this to the board each month. And so at that time, we did assess fees for certain entities, but those were the ones that were provided to us through the schools. Sometimes the schools kept the fees because they were handling the entry outdoors and things like that. Um, but that process changed under the prior administration and it um moved over and I was taken out of that process. So from then on, I don't know that we've collected fees because it wasn't um run through the run, it wasn't run through the finance office. It was being handled at the school level and reports were then provided up to Amber. Am I right in saying that reports were handled to you for any?
Yes, but I did receive payment, I know, on one, but some were Parks and Rec and then some were employees' churches. And so we did not charge our employees that were involved in it. Is that correct, Mr. Stone? That's that's what I was, how I was trained to that did not. But there was one that I did collect, but I have not had anything since then because they've either been um associated with a board member, associated with an employee under King William County Schools and schools, or they haven't used inside facilities, they've only used parking lots and there's nothing there in addition that we would have to pay. So that's why we have not received any additional funds that I'm aware of since I've been here. I can't speak.
And same here, I would, since I've seen any fees collected either. I mean, the process, usually the principal approves the uh facility use that comes through the to the pipeline. And we, I only verify certificate of insurance, verify a pill on our calendar, that that data is logged, that we would have HAC or key holder to open the facility up for opening and close. But as far as any fees involved in that as well.
When there's an event, is there somebody from faculty that is present?
I can't answer that. I I don't, I'm not sure.
So who opens and closes the building for them?
Typically myself or custodian, a key holder, custodian or myself.
And events in the past, like um Boy Scouts would do things, but they were gone before a custodian would leave for the evening.
Yeah, they'd have it like from the six o'clock in the afternoon, especially during a weekday, right?
Like your PTAs of each school that have that. But most of them haven't, I mean, this, the first one listed up, there's the first one we had quite a while. Um Dawn's School of Dance, I think that was an agreement.
Yeah, I don't.
At some point to use, because there's not an auditorium or anywhere in the county, they use this space, but they cleaned up after themselves and did all of that jazz. And so they weren't charged for that reason because it was our students. That's at least the the input that was given.
Yeah, my two cents on it are, I I wanna charge a fee because the majority of people, it's not working anymore. Majority of people are probably paying taxes already, so they kinda get the use of the public facility. Um but I would hold them accountable that you leave the room, the parking lot, the lawn, if the condition you found it. And if it's in a condition where it needs service, they're responsible for those fees if they don't take care of the area.
I think my only concern with that moving forward is we're setting up chairs at times, we're providing our own chairs. We're providing someone who will let them in and out of the building. We still have to clean the bathroom, whether it's that weekend or that Monday morning before school starts. So we do have an expense, expense that isn't covered, if we don't, if we don't charge a fee.
What would your recommendation be?
I feel like we need to review the fees and review, um, I mean, those fees were set at least five or six years ago because when I got here, they've been the same. I think we need to look at that. Um hourly rates have changed a lot in the past few years. We're up against a minimum wage hike again. So I think it's something we need to look at. Um Parks and Rec has custodians that clean, but they pay them through Parks and Rec and we aren't involved in that. So the custodians on weekends allow uh the basketball fans or pickleball or whatever in and out, but they handle the payment of those custodians and we don't get involved in the Parks and Rec side, just to kind of explain the difference.
Being an old timer, can I speak a few minutes?
Sure.
Okay, so many, many years ago, I used to request use of the school for various events. In particular, I held a vacation Bible school here, the school for years and years. When we did that years and years ago, we had to get permission from the school principal to use whatever facility we wanted to use. And we were, the school, this, we were responsible as the organization for, of course, providing the insurance information and all of that. We were, the the school would assign us a jan, a custodian and we would pay that custodian, where, and most of the time it was overtime rate. We would pay that custodian an overtime rate to be with us for the entire time that we had the building. We would also have, we would have to come through the school board to get permission for the waiver. But the only thing that that um we paid for, the custodian, we paid, um if we used the cafeteria, we paid to use the cafeteria. They required us to have a um cafeteria worker here on site, that we had to pay that person. Um, but that was the only fee we paid. We made sure that, you know, the building was left the same way, we found it clean, in order. And if we needed, um, you know, um, law enforcement or whatever, that was on on my church or my organization to take care of that. But that's the way we did it, and that's been a long time ago, because I haven't done vacation Bible school in the, in the school in years. But that's the way we did it back then. I used to use the school for vacation Bible school, but I know that my my um group of churches have used it for vacation Bible school, we've used it for um watch night services, we used the gym. Um, we've used it for concerts and all kinds of stuff, but that was our responsibility, again, to pay the the janitor or the custodian who was here. And again, we usually paid them not their normal rate, but an overtime rate, because they'd already worked a forty-hour week.
And I would say like during COVID, I mean, our schools weren't open, our buildings weren't open. So this really is just, I guess, coming to light now that more and more groups are requesting to use it. I don't think we've had, I think we've had a law for years where our buildings weren't really being requested because there weren't large gatherings or large groups. And so I think this is coming to light only because of some of these requests that have come in.
And there's just a lot of places that you can have.
Yeah, I'm on board for revisiting the fee structures, um which we can talk about.
Yeah, and.
Later, I guess.
Yeah, members of the board, if you'd like, because as I shared, this this. Yeah, members of the board, if you'd like, because as I shared, this this could be a, you know, a lengthy discussion because we would want to bring back a policy recommendation to you. And hopefully a policy that we can follow consistently. And like I like I shared, and I think Amber said it best, if it's a school affiliated group like a PTA or a boosters, it's that's a school affiliation. If it's Parks and Rec and we have an MOU with them or an MOU with any agency, that that might include facility use as part of that M O A. So, uh, uh, an example is the Raiders Football Organization. We have a facilities use agreement with them. But we can certainly bring back the current policy and any recommendations for modification to that policy, including a fee structure. And then we could say that from that point forward, if the board wanted to adopt that policy and that regulation, that that's how we would apply it. And if you'd like us to do that by the maybe the April meeting, if if that's okay.
Yeah.
I think we could probably work pretty quickly to pull to pull that off. Okay, very good.
Before we move on, I just want to say something about that. So, um, I work in property management and I used to work in a building that had the entire fourth floor was made up of three, four, five rooms, um, that people could rent. So we did allow our tenants to use those spaces either for free or each room had a small cost. Um, however, we did charge for if we needed to cater or put up chairs and tables, take them down. Um, cleaning, taking, having somebody take the trash out. If it was over a certain number of people or if there was alcohol there, you had to have a security guard. And so all of those additional people were paid extra. So I think if we have something like that in place, I think that would be helpful. Um, I also would like to know where those fees, um, will be applied after they are collected. Um, and then see what we, oh, go ahead. Okay.
So the fees in the past would have gone to offset any additional housekeeping type items. So in the past, we were paying either a custodian to stay after or paper towel expense. Soap expense. So I mean, that to me would be the ultimate place. Because it's just would be an easy here, here. Um, but we also have to think about, we don't heat our buildings in the on the weekends. And so, you know, when Parks and Rec are here, we're bringing the temperature out for Parks and Rec and then back down. So if we're having to do something different, there is additional heat expense along with electricity, water, et cetera. Especially if it's at the high school, we pay for water by the gallon.
Which I think is also good to work in there because, I mean, like buildings, you have after hours HVAC and that's an additional cost that's not budgeted for because you're not sure how much it will be used.
Yeah. And the other thing that we we've had the concern in the past is if something like a HVAC goes down or, you know, a a large something happens. I mean, Tony's gonna then have to call in people to work over the weekend to get something ready. And so that that's been a concern too on some of the things.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you.
Thanks. And I would just say for those that might be listening, I think I speak on behalf of the board that we'd like to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars and of the of the county's needs. But just recognizing that it's it's not, um,
Nothing's free.
It's it's not unlimited, that, you know, there's there are some costs that we can expect to incur. And like Mrs. Longus said, those haven't always been accounted for in the budget. And obviously, the size of the event or the duration or the fact that somebody might request to use, and and this, this is where the facility request process becomes a challenge is because you may have a group that says, and I'm making this up. But, um, you know, we would like to use Hamilton Homes Middle School, the entire school. We're going to fill it up with people and use it for whatever it is, you know, public education or recreation. But we'd like to use Hamilton Homes Middle School, you know, every Saturday and Sunday from ten to four. You know, and then so then we'd either say yes. And then it it would never be available for our use. Or we would say no or some combination thereof. So I think trying to make sure that we specify what the nature of the request would be. Um, and then make sure that we can staff it because like Ms. Longus and Mr. Stone, you have to have a key holder in the building. Somebody that knows the code, somebody that has the authority to know what to do if an emergency arises. Uh, where the AEDs are, where the emergency exits are, uh, the person that has the authority to call law enforcement. And sometimes that's not always a custodian. Because the custodian could be a part-time person that has never had to do that before and might not. So so I I think we need to put ourselves in a position where we can facilitate those requests successfully and safely. Uh, the other thing that I was going to mention is that anybody that makes a request, um, has to have a certificate of liability insurance. And so, um, that's also a part of our process as well. But thank you for the feedback and we'll bring something back at the April meeting for you to consider. And if we get something sooner, maybe that's some information that we can share along the way as to what we're what we're thinking about. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is, uh, the admission of non-resident students. Uh, this hopefully is a very brief item. We have a a a practice in place right now where um, when we, when we're contacted by by families that live outside of King William that would like their children to attend school on a tuition basis, we have steps for them to follow. But what we've done is just codify those steps into a revised policy and regulation, uh, that we're seeking board approval. So it's just, it's really just a a codification of the process that we already follow for tuition students. Happy to answer any questions, but would love to entertain approval.
Um, I just had one. So for transportation, if the non-resident student was to be dropped off possibly at somebody's house or like a stop that a bus makes, they still cannot ride?
Mr. Stone, is that I I I the the question is, could a non-resident student be dropped off at a resident student's home and be included in a bus route?
It's very far between and it's a discussion that happens because they know when they apply that that we do not offer transportation. So if there's a situation like that, I know of one, they, if the bus is not overcrowded more than it's allowed, then they will allow it. But I believe that if it's crowded from a scavenger, that they let them know it's not.
So would there possibly be something that we could do to build it out in our budget? Oh, with the tuition that they're paying, we may need to adjust the cost somewhere down the line. But do something like, um, Alet Country Day School does where the parents can meet at Food Lion and the bus can pick them up from there and drop them off. But make sure that we're covering the cost of. Correct.
Yeah, just a flat five dollars or something.
Okay. I'd like to kind of look into that.
Kids from all levels and you can't put the littles on the bus with the elders.
Yeah.
So you would actually be looking at two different buses. And most of these kids are driving.
Oh, they are driving. Okay.
You're you have the kids that are in the high school are getting ready to drive or they're driving.
Okay.
It's just really the middle down.
How many do we have?
We have, I think, twenty students, I'm sorry, twenty students. And I'd say maybe seven of them are in the high school, maybe eight. They fall in that, they come from Alet or they're, but we're actually getting questioned a lot more for the younger schools out of Essex, out of King and Queen. Um, I've had quite a bit of that.
Okay.
You actually have one in your package.
Yeah, okay.
So we have the tuition rate set. We set that last month. Would you like us to, uh, uh, maybe what maybe the thing to do, if you're okay with this, is we approve what's been proposed tonight that allows us to move forward? And if you'd like us to come back in April with a recommendation for a rider fee for a family that might request it because it sounds like it's few and far between.
It's mainly your younger.
But we could come back with a reasonable rider fee and, um.
But no, they're driving from, and and this is just thinking out loud, they're driving from Dunsville or Stevens Church and they're driving to, say, up here at the Food Lion. Why would they want to pay a fee to travel?
Yeah.
Just say, I mean, just.
No, I agree.
All looking all angry.
Yeah. Yeah.
And most of, I've not had one person have a problem with it.
Okay.
Because they know the expectation of being because other schools aren't doing it.
Okay.
It it and it's probably better on a case by case, but it might, but if it were, if it were codified, it might create more more challenge than we're capable of tackling.
Well, I mean, maybe we can push it out a year and see what happens. Um, I'm just thinking of additional revenue streams that may be able to help us. So.
But no, this is definitely not a revenue with with bringing them in. Right, it's not a big revenue, but what what brand tuition do you do? If you're just trying.
We're offsetting the.
Yeah.
So if you're.
What if we have more children in the lower grades?
That might be offensive to them.
So.
If you've got twenty kids and seven or eight of them are driving, then you still got thirteen that parents.
I like the two of them right off the bat on my head have siblings at middle and elementary.
Okay.
So moms are going to regard this.
Yeah, but it could be an option that we could offer. Yeah. To ensure that the ones that are out of county, that possibly are riding the bus from everyone's house every day, house every day could could pay a fee.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because bus transportation for general ed is not necessary, like, right? It's not required that we provide bus transportation for general ed, just special ed students. So if we're talking about tuition kids, there there's an opportunity there.
Okay.
All right, and look into it and give you an update.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, are you all comfortable approving what we have here? And then we'll come back with, um, possible rider fee.
Sure.
And and do you want that next month or do we want to maybe tackle that for next year?
I think next next year is fine.
Okay.
All right, so do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the policy or mission for non-resident students.
Seconded.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. And the motion carries. All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item I think is also going to be fairly straightforward. We currently have in the board's policy manual, a policy and a regulation that specify the third Tuesday of the month as the regular school board meeting, which we've been pretty consistent with. But it also specifies that the board meetings will begin at six o'clock with the closed session and seven o'clock for the open meeting. And, um, we've we've talked a little bit about this before in in the past. Um, I just wanted to know if the board was interested in entertaining a revision to the start time. I mean, ideally or ultimately, the school board can can have a meeting tomorrow at two o'clock as long as you appropriately advertise it. But in just in terms of the regular meeting, if you would want to change that meeting time and possibly change the time of the closed session. You know, we always have an agenda placeholder for a closed session after the meeting if one were needed. Uh, but in some cases, closed session is needed prior to the meeting, either for student cases or maybe an urgent personnel case. Um, or an urgent student case rather. But, um, just wanted to open that up and see if if there was any discussion about a change in the meeting time that you would want publicized or put into a policy. Otherwise, you could leave it blank and we can just, and we can just do this sort of on a semi-annual or monthly basis or however the board would like to do it.
I think we have had some discussions about changing it.
I I'd be open to six o'clock on the third Tuesday. Earlier would be nice. Get out at after nine o'clock every night. It's harder for the general public.
So that's what we currently have now. So I think we are thinking more in terms of maybe like we could do like a thirty minute closed for discipline if needed, um, or personnel prior. And then if we needed to discuss other matters, have it after. Open test suggestions.
I mean, that's technically what we do now, right?
Now we do an hour closed session. And then start the meeting at seven.
I was thinking five and six is what I was thinking.
And if 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 board members can commit to a five o'clock start time for a closed session and then a meeting. It's it's going to be the what the board might want to do. And you don't have to decide tonight, we could come back.
Absolute earliest that I can probably get here on a regular basis. And most people work until five, so should they want. About thirty is a little more reasonable to expect.
I'm likely to adjust my calendar after April, but in April, I'm already committed to being in Charles City until five o'clock. And there's no way to get from Charles City to get here at five thirty. It's it's pushing it to get here by six.
Looks like it's fine the way it is.
So we like to just
Just leave it as it is.
Right now and then visit it case by case.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right.
Um, another thing that I see here is this is in the atrium of Hamilton Homes Middle School. We don't typically meet in the atrium. We used to, but.
I I I think the cleanest thing is to be less specific and say we're going to meet at at Hamilton Homes and folks will find us. You know, we'll always advertise where it's going to be. I think where I was trying to get it, sometimes when you put really specific things in a policy, it boxes you in. And then all of a sudden, you know, you open yourself up to somebody saying, hey, you're violating your own policy by having a meeting at six o'clock and not seven o'clock. So I might suggest that even some of that, we even keep the third Tuesday of the month at a at a time to be determined or something like that and and posted and publicized in accordance with Virginia statute. You could, you know, and we just have a reasonable agreement that that we work toward five thirty or six thirty.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
So why don't why don't I do this? And we, just in the interest of time, would you like me to bring this back with with, uh, with some different language in April? Just as a as a quick item?
Sure.
Or or just or just we 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 leave it the way it is until the end of the year?
Is anybody interested in making a motion?
I'd say just leave it the way it is till the end of the year and then we can deal with it over the summer.
All right.
It sounds good to me.
Make your motion.
Um, do we need to make a motion if we're not changing it? I don't think so.
So let me ask one more question before we before we move on this. So, I mean, I know the board has tossed around a couple of times doing work sessions also. Would that need to be included in this song? Or is that something, would that be something different?
Yeah, sometimes. Yours is dead too.
I think it would be something different, right? Because those are.
If the if the board wanted to establish, um, a s- some scheduled work sessions that might be a specific day every month or every every two months, we could do that too. But otherwise, um, we could stick with identify, sort of like what we're going to do tonight. Maybe identifying a potential for another work session and then advertising that. That's that's sufficient. That's all the board's obligated to do. Um, I think it's a courtesy to be able to say, we're going to do the third Tuesday every month at seven o'clock. But, um, lots of reasons why that may or may not make sense. I just I I just offered that because of some of the conversation that we've had about uh, the desire for additional work sessions, when that start time might be. And just contrasting that with what the policy says, which is no matter what, they're at seven o'clock. Thank you. Thanks very much. So we can leave it the way it is and come back maybe, um, after school, like at the June meeting?
Yeah.
Do you want to have some conversation then? Okay, thank you. All right. And Madam Chair, the last item under superintendent's items was, uh, some brief discussion about, um, or however much discussion you'd like about the code of conduct. Um, but what I was going to ask is if any board members would like to do a quick stretch break and maybe we can do a brief recess.
I would like a quick recess, please.
Yes.
It'd be nice.
Alright.
Brief recess, five minutes.
Recession.
Yeah, so.
Yeah. I would like to make a motion to go into a quick recess.
Motion to go into a five minute recess.
All in favor, or can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All opposed say no. And recess.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know. Alright.
I'm tired.
Well, I, I know, just in, just in terms of the general.
They all dying on your mic? I ain't using mine no doubt, you don't have to replace that.
They goes on there.
He won't read the book. No tears.
Yeah.
You ready? You're home, aren't you? There, he's leaving.
Yeah, that's a mean. Could be everything down. Right, it should.
Wow.
Yeah.
And she only slept two hours sometimes.
Hold on.
Oh, right.
Yeah, mine kept on blinking on me.
Yeah, it's, hers was good. I think that's weird.
Thank you.
Wasn't it like two weeks ago that it was like burning up in here? I mean, two months ago. I was like, I was like. Now I'm freezing and I was like, I am not gonna wear a thick sweater. Cause if I do. I will be burning up. And now I'm freezing.
I don't know. My sweater's wet cause I just washed my hands and use it to wipe my hands off. Cause I, I hate the hand dryers, they.
They spread bacteria, they're gross.
EBGBs. And they take too long and make me feel weird cause I can see like my skin flapping all around.
They're gross, they spread germs.
Have one. A piece of gum?
I don't use, uh, I'll use them to get some of that.
You want a piece of gum?
My daughter, my granddaughter doesn't like them.
So, set.
She can't get annoyed.
I will be there as soon as I can.
I'm doing the job day on Friday. I'm picking up kids from school in all five, twelve months. I'm teaching. What, what more you want me to do?
I'm like, I've volunteered at least over ten days where I have volunteered already this year. And I'm getting ready to do career day and Easter egg hunt I'm putting on. I even bought over a hun- I bought over two hundred Easter eggs. How do you know? They tell you? Oh, or she should have been more specific.
Tell you.
I take it personally.
No, 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 no.
Eric, you want a cookie? You've been such a good boy down there.
No, thank you.
Alright.
You ready? You're up first, that's next. Um. You're up next, this next session.
Hey. Hey, Tony wants a hug.
Yes, I know.
Yeah, as soon as she came running in here, she ran right down the hall and was like, where's my man's room at? And I was like, he's not in there.
I'll be there in Charles City on Tuesday. No, yeah, Charles City on Wednesday and Little Six.
By Riley.
I don't know how you drink bottled water.
You could also listen.
We don't.
If it's recorded.
Yeah. Are we ready?
I think this is closer than I'm talking about.
Oh, the kids have candy.
Wait, is that, you said candy? What is it? They can. I know. Alright, I would like to make a motion to return from recess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. And welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you, ma- thank you, Madam Chair. The, the next item under superintendent's items is, um. Uh, a deeper dive into some components of the code of conduct that we'd like to get some board feedback on. You may recall that at a prior meeting, we shared with the board. Um, a matrix that we had, that, that had been created, that we had refined, um, and. We understand that there are questions about consistency and clarity with, with that matrix. And, you know, administrators trying to understand what the expectations are from. Or the guidance is rather from, uh, the Department of Education. And some of this is related to, uh. Trying to limit the amount of time that students are removed from school or removed from class. But nonetheless, finding appropriate ways to respond to, uh, the range of student behaviors. And so, uh, specifically tonight, what we'd like to get some feedback on. I think a lot, a lot of the information that we have in our code of conduct is relatively straightforward. Uh, but what, what we'd like to get some feedback on about from the board is. The extent to which you might like school administrators to maybe draw a sharper line. With respect to certain things. Uh, in particular, cell phone use in schools, maybe student attendance. You saw from the attendance report that I shared earlier, that three of our four schools, we have, uh, quite a, quite a few students. That are missing a lot of school days. Some of those absences are legitimate and maybe some are less so. Um, there's a, uh, opportunity for us to maybe determine a threshold. After which a certain number of absences might trigger an academic penalty. Um, that might have a waiver process associated with it, that sort of thing. Um, we may not cover and agree on everything this evening. And so, um, one of the things that I'll suggest is potentially coming back for a work session early next week. That we can have some open dialogue about this when it's not nine thirty P M. And, uh, and we can, you know, spend a little bit more time on that issue. Um, so we wanted to get some feedback from the board about cell phones, about attendance, about dress code. Um, and just about general or conduct in general. We've also shared with you a resource, uh, that's, it should be at your, at your.
Your, at your.
Seats on eight and a half by fourteen paper. We've got some draft examples of a response matrix or a consequence matrix. To try to help all of our school administrators, um, interpret. Infractions similarly and therefore respond to infractions similarly. And so, um, maybe we'll try to tackle these one at a time. But with that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn the microphone over to Shelley Waldron, uh, and to, uh, Sabrina Moran. And they are from our Department of, uh.
Security.
Thank you very much.
You want this to be?
Drew a blank here. That's right, thank you. They are from our department. That's where they're from. And they are here just to share a little bit of information with you and try to get some feedback and engage in some preliminary conversation. As to a direction that you might like us to go with any revisions to the code of conduct. That might include, um, some more specific responses to certain behaviors. So with that, Ms. Waldron, I'll turn it over to you.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I think we left off with passing out of the notebooks the last time. In which, excuse me, you had, um, an elementary and secondary code of conduct. Descriptions in there, what we have been using as far as the state S bar codes for this school year. And in listening to the conversation that we've had with you about consistency or our discipline. We are in agreement with that, which leads us over to the short and sweet of it. With the, the longer paper that was passed out to you this evening. It would eliminate. The different responses. That could be chosen from in the yellow sheet, on the yellow sheets. For example, if you look at your elementary, because it's gonna be the first one that's in your folder. You look at that, there's a level one, level two, clear up to the level five responses. And you can see underneath each one of them, there are several different things that could be chosen. For a level one response, there's one, two, three. Well, different things that could be chosen. Depending on how many times the student has had a level one consequence. If you look at the longer papers that were passed out, we don't have one for elementary. However, there are specific detailed consequences for each offense. That says, this is what's gonna happen on the first offense. This is what's gonna happen the second one, clear up the fifth one. Whereas you don't have all this choice in here. Then that's where we find that we end up with our inconsistencies from. Incident to incident to incident. So if you look at this first page. Right, this is, this is not big enough for me tonight. Um, on the first one, it, just the high school one, for example. If you had the first one that talks about interfering with the classroom performance, it would have. Performance, it would have the first offense, you would get a warning. That would be across the board. You get a warning, that's it. Second offense, you get one day of I S S. And then write down, I think five times is a little much. When we're supposed to be teaching the students how to perform in school. And how to learn from their consequences. But nevertheless, this would take away all that inconsistency. All that inconsistency that we have right now with our S bar codes as far as what we're doing with this student, what we're doing with that student. And we would have some more consistency throughout.
Ms. Waldron, I have a question.
Sure.
So where you have the first, second, third, fourth and fifth offense.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so based off of that, is that? The first offense being considered when they're actually sent to the administrator?
Yes.
Okay, so that doesn't include the warning that the teacher may have emailed the parent or.
We're just, hard to say.
I think the teacher has every right to go ahead. I don't believe so.
Right.
I think the teacher has every right to go ahead and have control of their classroom and say, stop doing that appropriate. This is the way we learn in this classroom. This is what we have to do forward. Then if that student does it again, then they go on to have the referral to the administrator.
Right.
And then they get that warning again. And that's where you can incorporate your counselors. Um, if you have a student who needs T V T process and start to nip this in the bud. Before it gets to escalating where we have some of the incidences that we've been dealing with.
And Mr. Farmer, I'll, I'll add to that maybe from a different direction. And there's always some P D associated with professional development associated with this for staff, but. I bet each of our administrators has received a referral for a behavior that hasn't been corrected in class. That, that just, that just shows up at the office. You know, that if something happens, and, and I'm not saying it happens today or yesterday, but it could have happened last year, let's say. Just to, you know, take, to, to. I don't want anybody to, to, to think that I'm talking about one person i- in particular because I'm not. But as a former school administrator, I've dealt with that where. There's been a behavior and a student's been sent to the office. And I have said, as the assistant principal, why are you here? And the student says, I have no idea. My teacher just sent me here. And so, so sometimes that happens as well. And we want to make sure that we empower our teachers. And I think the vast majority do, to make sure that they give a warning. But then if a student is referred to the office, so. There's some differences here, especially with, with, with younger children, but it goes all the way to high school as well. There are office managed behaviors and there are classroom managed behaviors. And there's not always a clear line between those two.
Right.
Um, but, but nonetheless, I, I think, I think the way that this matrix is designed. Is, is we're going to assume that the warning has already occurred by the time that behavior makes its way to the office. Where a teacher has said, I'm tired of warning Chuck to not do this, that. I need some additional help from the administrator.
Well, what I, I, what I was thinking is, is if you've been warned by the teacher. And it's gotten. and it's gotten to the point where you're being sent to an administrator, why are we gonna warn him again?
Correct. Yeah, we shouldn't. Exactly. And, and this is, this is a rough example that we can refine. But, but, but I, I, I think all of us would agree with you.
Okay.
Absolutely. I was gonna share something on that first line as an example. So where Mrs. Waldron read interfering with the learning environment, obviously, the scope of that behavior could be broad, right? And for, for, and again, this is, there's some professional learning associated with this. I remember as a school administrator, there were some teachers that couldn't stand when children chewed gum. And that, they, they were sent to the office for chewing gum. Meanwhile, I'm in the office chewing gum. You know, it's just, it's one of those strange things that, you know, consistency is not always about the response, but it's about the environment as well. We want to make sure that we're sending students a consistent message throughout the day and not necessarily dependent on which room or place that they end up in. But also what I wanted to share is that for that code, you can't get to the fourth offense with that code. We can't put that into our system because we'll get an error code. That's why it says use code B S O three. So once a student has been, you know, once it's that student's fourth offense, it sort of jumps down to the next section on this front page and we have to use that. And see there that the first offense is a warning. And so we've got to be real clear with how administrators are interpreting documents like this that that could be a student's fourth offense, but under that code, it's the first offense.
Yeah, but if you've already got warnings one through three up here, we gotta find a different area to start at.
Well, but, but what I'm, and, but maybe the area, the different area to start at doesn't apply because these are very specific definitions. And so that's where that's sometimes where school administrators get boxed in is, is, is the vocabulary. And they have, and they will often try to interpret what that vocabulary means. But I, I agree with you one hundred percent that if it's a fourth offense under this code that now requires me to use this code down here, I have to maybe jump to, to a, to a, to another place. I have to jump to another, to another square. But some of, some of what you see here is what school administrators in schools have to enter into our database. And usually throughout the year, when, when we run reports, because the data are, are pulled monthly and then we, we have to send the Department of Education reports, there are lots and lots and lots and lots of errors that have to be corrected because there are inconsistencies between the code that was used and the consequence that was administered. And so just to help you interpret this as well, if you'll notice where it says highest level, that's, th- those are the level one, two, three, four, and five infractions that Mrs. Waldron was, was mentioning. And so, so we have to navigate what the system allows us to put, you know, in, in, in the olden days, you could send a student to the office, someone would write on a piece of paper and that's, and, and there wasn't a computer system to enter it into.
Yeah.
Now it has to be entered, the codes have to match the behavior, the consequence has to match the code. And where you see the columns that say risk, law, and victim, those are, this is sort of a, you, you, you've, you've got the binary response here from where the, these data were pulled, false means you don't have to report it, true means you do. So what risk means is a risk assessment must be completed. Law means law enforcement must be notified by Code of Virginia. And victim means you have to identify a victim in the, in the database. And so sometimes those are error codes that we encounter where, where you've, you've got, the administrators have, have used a certain code to characterize behavior between two students, but they don't characterize it be, that there be, that there's necessarily a victim, but the state code requires there to be a victim identified. It's, it's incredibly technical and these S bar things change a couple times a year that we, that, that schools have to sort of monitor. I say all that to say that, that we want to make sure that whatever the decisions that administrators are making in school are consistent with one another and appropriate and that they conform to what our expectations are and the board's expectations are of, of responses to behavior that ultimately changes the behavior. And, and we, that's what we want to, we want to change the behavior. We don't necessarily want to throw everybody out of school, but we want the, the misbehavior to stop and appropriate behavior to grow. And whatever the consequences are that need to occur to shape that behavior is where we want to try to go tonight. And I'll say, I'll say some of that to say that, you know, cellphones have come up before. Cellphones are a major issue, major issue, major distraction. Um, there, there, social media is, is a real big problem. And so, you know, maybe we'll get to a point this evening where we can get an idea where we might need to go if we extend this conversation, you know, at, at, at a work session. But let me pause there and I, I spent a lot of time talking and see if there's any more comment and then maybe Ms. Waldron can continue. Did I answer the, did, did I help, help explain that?
Yes.
I'm nervous to speak because I've already voiced my opinion several times. Um, this has been my drive since originally being elected on this board. Honestly, if it was up to me, I would light this whole code of conduct on fire and start over again.
Amen.
But we definitely need to be more consistent in every single school. I do not necessarily think that discipline should be less strict in elementary levels because those are the students that will be coming up into secondary and they need to know that that behavior will not be tolerated. Um, I'm totally a hundred percent for no cellphones in schools. Um, no, my husband may disagree with me because he thinks it's a safety issue from prior law enforcement. Um, I would agree that students have it in their backpack. If we see it, we take it. There's no warnings and either the parent needs to pick it up or arrangements need to be made. Um, probably ninety percent of our fights that happen in this school are due to social media. Um, I also wish that there was a way to restrict certain apps from being able to be accessed. Um, and here like computers, but I know that's not realistic or possibly even possible. Um, the other thing was we do need to do something about the attendance. I think there should be something in place after so many occurrences, the child is disciplined. Um, and I also would like to remove the ability for S O Rs to press charges on our children in school when something occurs. Um, I think that not only does this cause a liability for us, but I also think that it will also make certain students maybe nervous to come to school because they develop that negative relationship with law enforcement and we don't want that. They're here to help. Um, and if something occurs, you know, the student and the parents are more than welcome to go up to the sheriff's department and press charges against that student because I'm hoping we would have documentation proving what happened and plenty of evidence for that. Um, let's see. I don't know. I'm all for making a lot of changes. I know that we are going to try to get a work session together next week to dive into this because honestly, I could spend eight hours or more um, combing through this, so.
I second all of that. I'm, I'm completely in on, on that program. I believe I agree with the cellphone thing, absolutely. Um, I agree it should be really clear cut, um, cause and effect. You do this, you get this. It should be communicated well. It could be on placards, it could be on the walls, could be in the schoolrooms themselves where they know that the most common offenses, they know what it is. Um, so they're informed before they do the activity, so they have no one to blame but themselves when they commit it. I'm all about individual accountability. They're in charge of how much they get punished. You do the crime, then you do the time. This is what happens to you if you do this. And they know it, so that it's not, it's completely impartial. They know in advance what happens if you do it. You chose to do it. You suffer the consequences, which you invite into your life from your behavior. It's just, I'm into that big time.
And I would like to say, since we have a lot of staff members here, um, I am more than welcome to take time out of my day during the week um, or even after school to host a work session with you all as well. Um, I would like to know what your feedback is and what you use for discipline in certain areas. See how that differs from our other schools and then also include you in the plan that we come up with to make sure that our discipline is consistent across the board.
I also would agree with you. Well, the concept really of, of school discipline goes back to teacher retention for me. If, if we're known as a, as a law and order school, a, a big part of teaching is just being able to control the classroom so you can actually learn. If you have people that don't want to be there, we should accommodate that. If they want to learn, we want them in class. Um, it should be well understood what behavior is expected. They should know what the consequences are if you don't. And then everybody can then walk forward in education all the way through primary school to secondary school. And if teachers know they can just come in and teach, most teachers like to teach. That's why they chose it. Um, but most of the time they do a discipline quite often. Makes it difficult to do their job.
And I think if they feel supported by the administration as well as staff, um, I think that will go a long way. A lot of teachers are scared to discipline. Um, I know from substituting for a very long time that some of these kids are larger than me. They can be intimidating, um, they can be hard to control, egged on by their peers when disrespecting a substitute or teacher. Um, so I think that it's not so much classroom management, although that is very important and plays into it, but we can never completely control or determine what a student's actions will be from day to day. Um, so I do think that if our staff feel supported, they know that if they stand up um, to some of these behaviors and that they are supported, I definitely think we will see a change all the way through and it'll continue to trickle down. So I know we're not having any decisions today. Do you want to talk?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Overall, I follow what Lindsay is saying here and to speak to the, or outlined here, the cellphone usage. I mean, me as a parent and my small children have only had a negative impact of people using cellphones. Um, and my children have been exposed to a lot of things because have allowed their children at a small age to have cellphones. And it's my children. Um, so get the cellphones out of schools. So it all comes to me, um, from the law enforcement perspective, I know some things were reported by children and shoot, shooting incidents. But, I mean, at this point, the amount of inappropriate activities that I hear about on a daily basis happening in the school with cellphones, if parents aren't willing to honor their children and to have them in there, there's no reason that the cellphone needs to be in school. I know I graduated a month ago, but I didn't have a cellphone every day and I managed just fine.
Amen.
Um, attendance and absenteeism. I don't know what to say. I sat in Cool Springs office about a month ago waiting for a teacher conference. The amount of children who walked in with their parents after eight o'clock was unreal. I mean, the parents at that age need to be held accountable. And, you know, potentially going to truancy, there is no reason that they keep walking at eight oh two. Eight o'clock's the limit.
The line is long.
It lasts for twenty minutes. I sit in it every day. I know. Either put them on the bus or get out of bed. Go on time. The parent, the parents and the children need to be consequences at some point. It's ridiculous. For the first thirty minutes of the office staff's day, they are checking you. You were not on time. That, that's absurd.
Um, dress code, walking around high school, um, seeing young ladies in the drift.
Uh, I mean, we are in a pool. It's not the summer. It's cold outside. Put some clothes on. So, I mean, I, I am all for, let's harsh it up. Let's send them home. Let's let the parents learn how to dress their children as they can't teach them from the get-go how to dress appropriately. Maybe they, they can learn how to, later when they can't come to school because they can't dress appropriately for school.
I'll add just a couple thoughts about attendance and that you, we, we are, by Code of Virginia, schools cannot suspend for students who don't attend. As strange as that is, and we don't have, we don't really have any consequences. Um, not that we want to always be consequence based. I think there are some proactive things that we can do and, you know, we have some ideas moving into the new year. You know, to try to incent students to come to school, I think there should, you know, there, there need to be some positive incentives. If kids want to come to school because it's fun and because they feel safe and because they're engaged with caring adults that, that, you know, that know who they are and, um, you know, know how to create experiences that make them happy and make them learn. But when students are absent from school and that's excessive, we are not allowed to remove them from school.
There's a truancy program that the county is funding that we could effectively use.
Well, and, and just, you know, one of the things that makes it a challenge, and this is where it gets complicated, is truancy is defined by a certain number of unexcused absences. And unexcused absences are often the very things that that make it difficult for schools to enforce, like vacations. You know, travel league sports, which, you know, which, which typically would be an unexcused absence, but we have lots of folks that play travel league sports because it's not a school sport. And so, you know, we, if, if, if we're gonna draw a hard line on truancy, we have to be willing to draw a hard line on excused and unexcused absences. And then the number of absences that we are, like, right now, our policy allows a parent note to excuse an absence for any reason. We allow ten of those a year. Um, and then after that, our policy says we would require a physician's note to excuse the absence for anything above ten. Um, but you can't make a family go to the doctor. And then we've got this, you, you know, the, the notion of, um, you know, what we've all heard over, over cold and flu and nor, in the norovirus season is when you're not feeling well, stay home. But maybe I can't go to the doctor because either I don't have insurance or we can't pay for it or, or what, or I can't get to the doctor, whatever the reason is. So our policy has some rigid components to it, but that don't always, not everybody falls rigidly in that. And so, you know, and just in terms of consistent application, I think there does need to be a threshold. I just don't know, well, I have some ideas of what that would be. Um, but, you, you know, we also don't want to give families, in my view, the opportunity to excuse thirty absences. You know, Chuck wasn't feeling well today and then, you know, and we get thirty of those notes and all of a sudden I've missed a month of school. Um, you know, I think in, in my view, a student's responsibility is to attend school. That's job one. And we can, we can, we can tie other privileges to that, like after school activities and athletics and all of those things, you know, we can establish a real higher expectation for our students. And I, I think what I'm hearing is that's what you'd like the code of conduct to reflect.
Absolutely.
Um, but ju- just keep in mind that, um, you know, that, that, that we're gonna have to, you know, we'll, we'll hold the administrative team and staff accountable to being consistent. But there may be some cases that make their way to the board that the board's gonna have to be consistent on that as well. The last comment I'll make about elementary, and we can put together an elementary consequence matrix. But remember, the Code of Virginia doesn't allow anything more than a three-day suspension for students up through third grade. And unless it's an aggravating circumstance, which would be a, a pretty serious incident. Um, so then we'd have to decide, well, what do you, you know, if you, if you, if you're in third grade and you've made your way to the third offense and it's time for something more, we might be able to code that as an aggravating circumstance, whatever it is, you know, we, we, we can. And again, maybe that's for more conversation. But we don't have an alternative for that student because our, our alternative program is only middle and high school. So remember in our budget proposal, we talked about So remember in our budget proposal, we talked about an alternative. That we'll get kids that get to the second offense or third offense at a really young age that require more than three days. We just don't have any alternative for them. And so. Um, some kids will benefit from that, you know, we don't necessarily want them home because they might be unsupervised at home and that might not be the safest place for them. We can supervise them at school, but that's going to be a a resource that we just don't have at the moment. But that being said, I don't want to, you know, I don't think we should focus on second graders making their way to the fifth offense because. They need some behavior modification along the way because they're seven and they may not know what they do. Um, but but nonetheless, um. Uh, I want you to know that we are willing to. Assemble a document and a response matrix that we think you'll appreciate for all levels. Um, but there probably does need to be a tiny bit of wiggle room in there somewhere. Because we're not going to be able, I'm I'm using Mr. Wassenberg. We were walking in, you know, if you do this, then that will happen. I totally agree. It's just hard to know what the if is going to be. You know, we've we we've encountered some ifs this year and in the past few years that we've never seen before. And so we've got to find a way in in some of those cases to to lump them in. We've got some pretty good categories here. These are state codes. They're the only codes that we can use. Um, because we have to report this information and I hope that you see now that. This document aligns to the one that we shared that was the new report for discipline that you saw earlier. These things need to align so that we can make the most appropriate decisions. And it's taken us a while to get to this point. Um, but I think we are at a point where as we end this year and, you know, for me, having come in and observed and worked with our administrative team. I think we're, you know, we we want to draw a tighter line and just want to know that the that the school board is ready to support that. So we can, we can, we can do it.
Ready.
And for families out there listening to the. School board talk about no cell phones, um, you 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 just need to know it's a big distraction in school. It's a real big distraction.
Absolutely.
Mm hmm.
Anything else, Ms. Waldron to? Talk about?
So just confirming, we will be tying in athletics into this as well, correct?
That's up for discussion. Yes, absolutely.
And I'm I'm going to bring a draft policy, an athletic policy to the board.
And braids.
Yeah. So so a question then that maybe, and if we if we if we are going to, if the board is going to vote on a work session for next week, you know. A a little bit later this evening, um. I can bring a draft athletic policy for you to review that. Um, is in addition to the code of conduct. Um, that would apply to all sports. We can also bring a recommendation for whatever that threshold is with attendance and grades, but I think we do need a waiver process. Um, Mrs. Waldron had surveyed, um, a number of the school divisions in region three and just to just to sort of share. What she found, only three right now have a cell phone ban. Three of the ones that we heard from have have a have a cell phone ban. Um. And I think only three have. Attendance and grades that are linked. Um, I I'll, I can tell you Westmoreland has both. And in Westmoreland County, um, if you miss ten percent of the school days, you're given an administrative failure in your courses. This would be at the high school, different, slightly different at elementary. Um, but you'd be given an administrative failure. There would be a waiver process because. You know, like if 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 I'm the student that missed X number of days, I could have been in the hospital, so I need to be able to share with the administration. I filled out my form. Here's my hospital receipt. This explains my absences. Then the school administrative attendance team can approve that and I'm good to go. Um, but we've got to build time in for that waiver process as well. And then again, decide. What is it that we're going to allow to be considered for a waiver? Is it? You know, is is it, is it, um? Is it just hospitalization? Is it court date? Is it, um? That the family said we had an opportunity to take, you know, Chuck and his sister on a two week cultural trip to Egypt. Um, that aligns with world history. There could be great education there, but they missed two weeks of school. So we're going to have to be, you know, just talk about what some of those. Conditions are where we're willing to say, you know, to draw that line in the sand because there are going to be lots and lots of different reasons why. Um. You know, families might think a student would need to legitimately miss school that might not align with. Our belief system. So we've got to be able to, you know, to to stand there. So we can bring some ideas back. For further discussion and and things for you to consider. Um, so that was Westmoreland's, uh. Westmoreland's cell phone ban is they're off and away all day. Uh, they do allow their students to use cell phones during lunch. I think we've got broad agreement among our leadership team that we probably shouldn't use cell phones during lunch. Um. Uh, you know, there there are going to be people that might disagree with that. Um, and I understand that, but off and away all day. Bus might be okay, after school might be okay, but during the day, we want to keep that silent and away. Um. And Westmoreland's consequences are like what Ms. Catlett said, even, you know, even the the first offense, it's taken. Um, and then a parent has to come pick it up. And then when you get to the third offense. You know, I think we've got that covered because that then turns into like, I'm defying authority here. They keep telling me to not have my cell phone out and I do. So that would be, it could be a suspendable offense, but you also might be restricted from even carrying. Um, a cell phone to school. And if you were caught with a cell phone, that might be an even harsher. Consequence. So. I think we can, we can pull together some things for the board to consider, but, um. You know, but some of this is going to require some community education as well because we're not there yet. Um, but I think we may have some some schools that that would that would say, hey, if you wanted to try this after spring break, even with cell phones, you know, we're ready to give it a go.
And I will say, just to add on to this, so I have one child in particular. That has more absences than my other three children combined. Because she has a hard time getting out of bed or does not feel good. And I can guarantee you, if. You tell her that she cannot participate in tilt or she would have to sit out of a game, I can guarantee you her butt would be getting up and out that door to get on the bus. And I do not always, yeah, and I do not always write a note for my children either.
Yeah, mine doesn't have a problem getting out of bed when it's baseball or basketball season.
Yep.
Motivations.
Yeah, and and I think that you alluded to this earlier, the extent to which all teams and coaches are on the same page. I think we need to tighten that up.
I agree.
Yeah.
I would be interested in knowing those three subdivisions of those three schools where they have the cell phones. Picking out three schools. The results of that have been discipline wise and how it's and things changed to positive or negative. I don't know if you can contact them with that idea.
Well, I I can tell you by and large, it's positive.
Without parent feedback.
Yeah, sorry.
Parent feedback.
Uh, I can find out if there's parent feedback, um, but at least school feedback from the administrators, it's very positive. Exactly. You know, there there are students that actually talk to one another during the day and interact and. You know, aren't aren't glued to, you know, uh, pho- phones are phones are an issue.
I'm like Patricia. I never had a phone. I wasn't allowed to eat in class, chew gum in class. You couldn't have anything other than water.
From the fountain.
And I don't know where that time went, but it doesn't seem to exist anymore. So.
Yeah.
And if it is a true emergency, there are ways to get in touch with your child or the child to get in touch with your parent through administration or guidance counselor.
Like walking to the office or clinic to call your parents and not text them to come and pick you up.
Yeah.
Old parents texting you in the middle of the day.
Yep.
Which that too is interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll share with you a recent article that I read about parent communication with children on cell phones during the day. And actually. Um, it it hampers the child from being able to operate independently during the day.
I read about that today.
Yeah, that's a good one. It's a good one. Okay, so so thanks. Um, and maybe, Madam Chair, um, I I know, I know we've had some informal communication about. Possibly a Monday evening work session and that may come up, you know, in in board member items. Um. Thanks. Did you want to hear anything else from Mrs. Waldron or Ms. Moran about what you think our direction might be? I'm not sure that a wholesale. Throwing away of the code of conduct because some of that language in there is policy language. But I think maybe the the extent to which we respond to those things, is that what I'm hearing?
I think it needs to be very black and white for parents. Um, they don't have access to this like we do. Um, so I think if it's very black and white, your child does this, this is what it's going to be. Um, the categories I think are confusing with pa- for parents because. A parent could be like, well, I think it goes in this category, but then we think it goes in this category and that's where the arguments start. Um, I think it just needs to be very. Definitive. And so there's no guesswork. There's no gray areas and. If it falls under more than one, then it's under more than one and you are either double disciplined or. Whatever the case is.
Are you s- and and maybe this is Monday's conversation, but are you suggesting fewer? Behaviors that are on these. White papers, fewer fewer things?
Not fewer.
Just clear it.
I just think there needs to be more. A more definitive response so that there's no guesswork.
And I think the current code of conduct, I mean, it's frustrating to me since I looked at it the very first time a couple of years ago. It. I think at this point, it probably needs someone for. Middle and high school and one for lower schools because we have all these.
Well, and bringing K three five.
Make, we can make exceptions. So then that opens up a new door. Um, and. Those children don't have the same capacity as the older children to make as rational of decisions. So even separating it instead of putting that clause in everyone and. I mean, you're reprising it, but the giving the way. Is confusing parents and it it's. Not allowing uniformity. It's not allowing. Children who are truly engaging. Poor choices, poor behaviors. To have any type of discipline to actually. Um, whether it be on the parent.
Mm hmm.
Or the child interrupted and open the class. There there's just too much. Oh, he falls on those categories. We don't need to worry about home. We aren't going to do anything. And then I think that age group needs to be addressed to a little more specifically. Um, and I, while I understand we can't do the same. Something needs to be done.
For elementary.
And we'll come back with a draft elementary response matrix that I think because the the policies. The policies are what they are. The board policies are what they are, but it's our, how we interpret them and respond to them, I think, is what I'm hearing. Yeah. Consistency is clear, right? Black and white. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate the feedback. It's helpful. And, um. Okay. Are you interested in, is the board interested in? In entertaining. A a change in what we do with cell phones.
Yes.
Sooner than later.
Yep, absolutely.
Sure. Yeah, because if we were to implement something now. We can adjust it. Over the summer if need be and.
Mm hmm.
Start the school.
It'll be like. Well, I said it'll be like prototyping. We will prototype it for the remainder of the year after spring break, see what needs to be tweaked, what works, what doesn't. And then go from there for next year.
And and there may be some legislation coming that allows school boards to ban cell phones. It's not needed because the school board can make any policy that it wants as long as it's legal. Um, but the legislation that we end that that, um, school divisions are anticipating. You know, should should make the school board feel pretty good about that decision. And so do you want us to come back on Monday with what that recommendation is specifically? For cell phones? Okay, because we we need to have a communication. Plan with families. I mean, I. Word will get out pretty quick, you know.
I think y'all get ready to answer those phones tomorrow.
So, okay. Thanks.
Do we know what?
Uh, Ms. Waldron, do you remember what West Point is doing with respect to cell phones?
I do not, not without.
What are they doing?
I can pack up my notes and I don't have them with me.
Okay.
We can have that for the next.
Do it.
Yeah, we can let you know.
Ms. Frazier can help you out. Ms. Frazier, what is West Point doing?
I believe West Point has a ban on cell phones. I think the students are allowed to use their cell phones. Um, doing lunch hour, but I think other than that, the cell phones are. Are not in the classrooms and not to be used. And from what I heard. That the students are even enjoying it because they can get more done. They don't have to worry about people. You know. Sending messages and whatever disrupting them while they in school and and whatever. So I think that's what they're doing.
Yeah.
And I know that, um. They they do also have attendance. Attendance is linked to, um. Grades administratively, they can, you know, you. You missed so many days, you can get an administrative fail for that period. And, uh, but they do allow students to get, some students to make up some of that work. They give them an opportunity to get some of that work back done. And they also have a like a eight block that is after school where students can stay after school. And get extra help and work with the teachers to make up some of that work if they had, you know, if those grades and. If they have a good reason for unexcused absence.
Exactly. And just just so that everybody knows, it's a great idea. And I I did talk to to my friend, Dr. Frazier about that. And one of the, one of the benefits that West Point has that King William doesn't is. Their bus routes are done in twenty minutes and bu- buses can come back and pick up kids. That stay after school for an hour where some of our routes are an hour or longer. And so. Requiring kids to stay after school means that we would be required to transport them, but that transportation might be two hours after school. And then we've got to staff that. And so, so some structural things that we can talk about that might have some schedule impacts too, but. Um, transportation is going to be a a a challenge and maybe it's not door to door. Maybe it's. You know, it's satellite locations or or something like that. And we can, we can work toward. Toward that because I think attendance and grades is going to be a next year thing. Right? Because we we don't have a policy now and it's probably. A challenge to penalize somebody for something that happened in the fall. So I, so I believe we're looking ahead for that. But thanks for the feedback and I am seeing nods. About a cell phone restriction all day. For after spring break and we'll clarify that with our team and come back with something on Monday or whatever, whenever we have our work session. Okay, thanks. And thanks for allowing so much time on some of these items.
Your favorite part?
Been waiting all night. All right, I'm nine point one is approval of the payment of the bills.
We approve.
I make a mention of the payment of the bills.
Ms. Atkins.
That's all I heard.
Mr. Wassenberg, I thought was first.
And it doesn't, I did. Let's do it. Yep, we approve it.
All right, the review of the financial summary.
Okay.
You got it? Um, for February, so our revenues are sitting at eighteen million, three seventy three. And seventy seven dollars and our expenditures are sitting at eighteen million, one thirty seven, one thirty eight. Um, this looks like a surplus of two hundred and thirty five dollars and, um, two. Two hundred and thirty five thousand, nine hundred and thirty nine dollars. But keep in mind, we pay, um. The month of July in this fiscal year because it's the end of the contract. Um, December sales tax arrived in March and so. Um, you'll see that on the March report and then, um, January and February, um, sales tax runs two months behind. Um, we're in need of February local revenue. Um. But we did get December and January during this month. Um, I did want to mention before I go into the budget, um, we, um. The director of operation, one maintenance person and myself went to Dominion Energy in Yorktown today and filled a twenty four foot. Um, gooseneck trailer full of free furniture. That furniture will be used for desks. Um, bookshelves and filing cabinets. And so we thank Dominion Energy for allowing us to do that. It was a three story building that they're tearing down. And so we got to go room to room and pick out what we wanted, load it up in the trailer and bring it back here. And so we'll be distributing that tomorrow. And then possibly going back one Thursday to get a couple more things that didn't fit in the truck because I had real big expectations for a twenty foot. Twenty four foot trailer. Um, but very excited about that. Um, some of the file cabinets. Are things that would cost hundreds of dollars for us to purchase. And it's going to give us, um, access to those along with bookshelves that can be spread out throughout the district. And we asked the principals. Of any items that they knew they needed before we left, so we knew what to get. Um, the next thing on the agenda is. Um, then next thing on the agenda is nine point three, the budget review. So on Monday at noon, um, Chair and Vice Chair, Ms. Catlett and Ms. Frazier from the school board, the Board of Supervisors, Vice Chair, Mr. Catlett, County Administrator, Mr. Ashcraft, Deputy County Administrator, Steve Hudgens, the Finance Director and Budget Analyst from Robert Half, that's on the finance side, Dr. Wagner and myself attended an hour session in which we talked about, um, where we are in the budget process. Um, really where we're sitting right now is that the county doesn't have additional funding to fund the need um, out of just our general revenues. And so if we are to move forward with our needs, we would need to pull them from a split levy fund. Um, that fund is set aside for us, it does have two point one million in it, but those are not recurring funds that we would be able to pull from on an ongoing basis. Um, we could pull from it for a year or two, but once that fund's depleted that is not gonna, that fund does not replenish itself, the only revenues that go in that are if real estate is, um, comes in over appropriated. So that could replenish a little bit here or there, um, but with some of the projections I'm seeing from the current um, fiscal year, that is not going to be much, um, in the future. Um, so what I have before you tonight is a, a spreadsheet. Um, the items in the, on the left side are what was provided in that meeting. Um, and then the breakout on, no, the items on the right side were provided in that meeting. The items on the left side are kind of breaking those downs. So salary increases, I feel like is the number one important thing that you all um, told us with, along with, um, Dr. Wagner's initiatives. Um, continuing would be any positions that are continue, or currently in the budget that we would want to continue that don't have funding currently. Mandates would be, um, based on numbers of class sizes and sped teachers and some of that. Um, and some of the things like electricity, I, I have to pay the Dominion bill. Um, not because they gave me free furniture, but they'll cut the lights out. Um, but like the, the sped bus and the sped bus aid, we have to bring a third sped bus on our route this coming year. Um, and then requested is the requested information um, that either the school board had requested or departments had requested, so that's put that in that final column. What I do, I'm not asking for answers tonight, I, I will ask for any feedback that you have for me. But, um, what I would like to do is the next step would be um, DOE is supposed to release another Calc tool on, um, the twenty-fifth of March, which is Monday night. Along with the County Administrator will present their, his overall budget, which I usually attend to see what he has in there for the schools. I would like to be able to take that tool and what the County Administrator presents as a budget and then recap back um, where we go from there. For instance, the original budget that we built on was the governor's initial budget that he released in December that we got those Calc tools, January twelfth, sixteenth and nineteenth. Since then, General Assembly has met and reconvened and presented some additional funding areas. But as it stands right now, the governor can veto some of those areas, that DOE tool will give me um, what the General Assembly um, proposed out of that to get, kind of give us, so the House and Senate both proposed a three percent raise to staff, we said we would, we were gonna try to support a three percent raise. Um, so if they have additional funding in there, then that might be a hundred or two hundred thousand more that we wouldn't need of that one point three. Or, you know, in, in different scenarios, so I'm not gonna be able to provide that to you until I get that information. And I can provide that information, um, through Dr. Wagner or however he would like me to present it at that point. What questions do you have for me? What feedback do you have for me? What can I help with at this point? I think, um, teacher retention, if I didn't say teacher retention, one, I fully support that, but if I didn't say it, this person over here would probably meet me in the parking lot, no, I'm just kidding. Um, teacher retention I think is most important, we spend so much time and money investing in our teachers. Then if they go and leave for a thousand dollars or two thousand dollars more, we're starting all over again. So to me, teacher retention is the most important thing, um, we have to do the mandates. Um, and I mean, from there, I think it's really up to you all, it's your budget, along with Dr. Wagner. And I'm here to play the number game.
So correct me if I'm wrong, um, the SFO and the security equipment, those are items that we're holding out.
So, yes, so they Yeah, so those, that is the match for the four I requested. The hundred and fifty thousand, now we originally had asked for two, but I was hoping that so we put in the two, a hundred and fifty thousand, we thought over, over and above, if we didn't get the grant we could fund two with a hundred and fifty thousand. But if we got the grant and we got all four, we would need the hundred and fifty thousand to match all four. That doesn't mean all four, one has to be at every school, it's up to Dr. Wagner. It could be two at the high school, one at the middle and one at the Quentin, I mean, it can be throughout the district. Um, we did originally apply for one at each school, but I'm sure that can be moved around if necessary, um. That, that is definitely a, an area in which I feel a lot feel strongly for. And so, um, I would hope that we would get that grant, but nothing's guaranteed in life. And just because we got the grant for four, if we only wanted to fund the thirty-one percent of two, then we just wouldn't use the entire grant. Cause it's a reimbursement basis, I don't get the money upfront, I have to spend it and then seek reimbursement. And you'll see at the bottom, so we are, are looking, so our original altogether over current fiscal year is two point, pretty much two point seven million. One point two six five or two six six of that is additional revenue coming in based on our student count and some other areas. The seventy-two coming out would be the metal detectors because that can be funded out of the three fifteen or capital fund to get us down to that one point three. But like I said, at this point, I don't know that we, unless y'all are ready to look at numbers, I don't know that I'm comfortable looking at numbers until I kind of know what our state revenues look like. But maybe in your mind, start kind of ranking.
Yeah, m- maybe, th- that, that might be my suggestion and, and if we have a work session, you know, we, this could be a work session item, but um, I think to, I think to go in now with a number before the county ha- has shared a number, I, I, I think it's probably feasible to wait, we can always hold a meeting if we needed to, to make you know, to make some decisions.
Um, well, we've already voted on our original budget, so.
We've met our, our obligation, because the board approved a budget before April first, so you're in good shape. We'll always have to go back and amend it, um, I think like what Ms. Longa said, the, the new Calc tool is gonna be important for us because there may be additional state revenue. Um, and then if the Board of Supervisors decides to fully fund this proposal on Monday, that may they may, they may decide to do that too, um, what, I think it's probably best to, maybe just to hold off and see.
Yeah, so last year we appropriated, the, the county appropriated the funds to us in April, we didn't approve a budget, you're you being the school board until May, but they had an, an April appropriation date. I'm being told they may not have an April appropriation date this year, so maybe a May appropriation date, so we would still have April and May to kind of come up with those numbers. They can appropriate money and you all can budget something different and approve budget and I just go back to them for additional appropriations in different categories. They're only gonna give us what they're gonna give us, but there's so many appropriations that I get rela- related to all the other funds and whether it's state, federal, local. Um, so that, I can, I can go for an appropriation at any point. I also wanted to give an update, um, I went before the board on last Monday for the additional buses and cars that we needed to get in our fleet that was before you at the February board meeting. They approved on Monday night that, um, and so we actually ordered tho- those items on Tuesday. Um, the cars came on Thursday and Tony is working on getting them into our fleet and getting them used. And then the buses are on, on order with a rather long lead time. Any other questions for me? Thank you.
All right, so next we have instructional item, um, by Ms. Davis and Dr. Bassett.
Good evening, board members. I'm sorry. Yes, we are still awake, good evening, we have just a short instructional update as we've already heard from um, Ms. Davis, Ms. Wilken and Ms. Waldron with the reverse inclusion model, as well as from Ms. Langford, who gave her update on the Perkins application. And so as we head into spring break, not next week, but the following week, I just wanted to give a brief update because the next board meeting is April the sixteenth. But that week that, the following week that we return, the week of the sixteenth, let me clarify that. We come back the week before, but the week of our board meeting, we do have the integrated reading and writing SOL test. And so I just wanted to ensure that you all were aware of that, that that would be taking place once we returned from spring break. I didn't want to give an update on the same week that the students would be taking the test. Um, as a reminder, the students did participate in the field test and pilot on last year for the integrated reading and writing. And just to provide a little bit of an update for the integrated reading and writing, which is a new component added to the reading SOL test. So while we're taking it as a separate or standalone test, it is a component of the reading SOL test. And so with the integrated reading and writing SOL test, there are six multiple choice questions and one writing prompt. And so students will be taking that the week of April the fifteenth. And so I just wanted to provide a brief update so that it's not coming the week that we have the board meeting. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have school inclusion items with Ms. Sherri Harris.
Good evening. So I provided you with our normal monthly numbers, did you have any questions regarding that information? Um, just on a real quick side note, I will tell you, um, I have applied for a a grant through National Food Group, which is one of our food vendors. They are sponsoring, um, a grant, it's called Grab the Tab. And basically what they will do is if we're awarded the grant, um, and I applied for King William High School, they will cover any negative debt that we have that I submitted for the high school. So fingers crossed, toes crossed, that we get that grant because the high school, I mean, they're, they're pushing eight thousand dollars themselves. So it's a lot. Um, and before, uh, before I sit down, I'll make this very quick, I just want to, um, acknowledge my staff, although I had one lady here, but she's, she's gone. Um, National School Breakfast Week, which was March the fourth through the eighth of twenty twenty-four celebrates the importance of a nutritious school breakfast and fueling students for success. The special observance during the first week of March celebrates the National School Breakfast Program and the many ways it gives students a great start every day. Starting the day off right includes a nutritious breakfast for all students. Celebrating National School Breakfast Week every year encourages all schools to recognize the importance of a healthy start to the to the day for fueling a child's academic success. Children who eat breakfast are more likely to reach higher levels of achievement in reading and math, score higher on standardized tests, have better concentration and memory, be more alert and maintain a healthy weight. But when the school week gets busy, it's easy for students to rush out the door in the morning without having breakfast. That's why school breakfast is such a great option. In fact, students who participate in breakfast tend, tend to have better attendance rates, that's what we're looking for, and fewer behavioral problems, that's also what we're looking for. The School Breakfast Program provides twelve million nutritious breakfasts to hungry children across the country every day. And King William provides an average of eight hundred breakfast meals daily to our students. This year's National School Breakfast Week's theme was Surf's Up with School Breakfast. Our kitchens and even some of our staff were dressed up to reflect the theme. Here's a short video showcasing some of our staff and the students celebrating National School Breakfast Week. Hit it, Ethan. Oh, where's the music?
All right. Does anybody think we need to go into a session?
Yeah, ma'am.
All right. So next we have personnel report and supplemental report. So can I please get a motion to approve the personnel report and supplemental report?
I will reapprove the personnel and the supplemental report.
Seconded.
Yeah, we didn't.
All right, so we have a second?
A second. Hi.
All Thursday now?
Any motions coming out of closed session?
There any motions coming out of closed session?
Yes, I'm moved to approve the release. That's for student two one one four two. Second. Hi.
All right. Um, so next we have matters from the board. Um, so I think the only thing we have under the um, the only thing that we have under this is we would like to have a special work session on Monday, March twenty-fifth at five P M. Have any other matters of the board?
Is ma- Madam Chair, is that the closed session or the open session?
That is the closed session at five P M with an open session at six.
Very good. Six. Hamilton Homes.
All right, any other matters of the board? Seeing none, um, next are some of our public announcements with some of our upcoming events. Um, King William County Public Schools will be hosting a job fair on Thursday, March twenty-first, twenty twenty-four here at Hamilton Homes at P M from five P M to seven P M. There will also be another job four P M on Monday, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, here at the school board office. We also have our Special Education Advisory Council. We also have our special education advisory council from six P M to seven thirty P M. On Wednesday, March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. It will be held here at Hamilton Homes Metal School. Then we also have the long awaited spring break. This will be April first through April fifth. There will be no school. Then we have a regular meeting on Tuesday, April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Our closed session will begin at six thirty P M and our regular meeting will be at seven P M. Any other dates you need to remember?
Did you say a closed session at six thirty on the sixteenth?
Correct. All right. And then next, um, can I get a motion?
Motion to adjourn, seconded.
All in favor?
All right.
All of those say no?